Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I thought I would kind of go over the process, our voucher process and our voucher paying process and seems that there's some concern on how we're processing these. So, I would like to first tell you, you are presented at times with what is called a batch report and it looks similar to this, okay? And then other times you're also presented with individual vouchers to sign. Now, as far as statute, 183510 says that the claims need to be properly dated, itemized, value of each item specifically described, and each claim shall be accompanied by an affidavit. So, in my opinion, which for what it's worth, this batch report meets those requirements, those statutory requirements. Now, you will see on the batch report that it has the date, it has the description of the charges, so on and so forth. And then when you get down to the claim shall be accompanied by an affidavit, please keep in mind, there is a signed voucher by claimant. Each claimant has signed a voucher. So, that is still, in fact, taking place in these batch reports, okay? This particular is one batch that you would be presented for signature. Now, there's about 105 vouchers in this one batch. So, we feel this is a more streamlined process to do a batch report. However, the individual vouchers that you do see, our process and policy is, anything over $1,000, a voucher over $1,000, must have three commissioners' signatures if it is a non-elected department, okay? And then also, in addition to that, any vouchers that are being posted to a 33 account, which for the new commissioners, that doesn't mean much right now, but that's commissioners' general accounts and you'll get more familiar with those as we go through the budget. 33 accounts, general accounts, 73 account, 1% projects. Let's see, what else? Right now, those are the top two that are coming. Oh, 39 accounts, capital equipment purchases. All those have to be approved as well by the commissioners on individual vouchers. So, I feel I have two in my accounts payable payroll department. They audit each voucher independently. It has to be signed by a department head or elected officials and then depending on if it meets the threshold, whether it comes to you for three signatures or it goes on one of these batch reports. So, that's in a nutshell. If there's any discrepancies, we pay off of invoice, has to be itemized invoices, that sort of thing. Any discrepancies, they'll reach out to the department head or if they have any other concerns, they bring it to me and then I'll research it further. And then after the warrants are cut or the checks are cut, they present me with a check history report that I review to look for any oddities and I approve those, okay? So, without going into much more detail, are there any questions for me or any concerns that you would like to address specifically?
Question that I would have is, when it comes to like the procurement process itself, if you're, let's just say we're buying vehicles and they're, you know, they fall in that $10 to $50,000 range or $49,999. Do you attach the, or do you have them attach the bids, whether they're just a solicited three bids that they need to have? Are those supposed to accompany that?
They do not, no. That has not been a requirement. You know, we feel, or I guess I feel as the department head, that that process should be adhered to prior to the invoicing and, you know, at the end of the day, we're the check, you know, we pay the bills, so we don't ask for that at this time.
And, Mr. Chair. So, I think that's part of approved as deformed. Is when legal signs off on that, we're saying that they did it right. So, it's, yeah, if we sign that, we should have checked to make sure the process was followed.
Okay.
Ms. Chairman, thank you, Madam Clerk, for that. And just for a little more background, once we get the batch report, can you just briefly explain what has been done up to that point?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Once this has been started, the process has started, these vouchers have been approved, have been audited by my staff for, make sure the vouchers, that everything, all the invoices listed on the voucher are there, that the total to pay is accurate, again, so an audit, so to speak, that they have the required signatures on the voucher. And then those are put into our payroll or accounts payable system in the computer and they're sitting there in a hold status until these have been approved by the commissioners. And once this batch form has been approved, then we go through the process of cutting the checks, so to speak, and then continuing on with our process and mailing the checks out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Milne.
Thank you for coming yesterday. After everything's paid and at toward the end of the year or anything, are there any further checks and balances of the invoices later down the road? Any further audits or anything like that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, not in my department per se, but obviously we have auditors that come in every year and audit. They pull samples of our invoices and that type of thing. So, I would say, yes, there are, just not within my department. Also, as Chief Budget Officer, I look at the budget every month and I will notice, say, if the account line is looking like it's going over, you know, I'll run reports, run the detailed reports and maybe something got posted incorrectly, whether it was my staff or it was coded wrong when it got to my office. So, there's that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, are you planning on being here for the duration of the meeting this afternoon?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes.
Thanks.
Okay, I think those little questions are there.
Okay, so with that, I guess, will we be able to continue with this batch approval process?
How do we get that on a computer and get it modern? It seems like there should be a more updated process that we could find or utilize, Madam Clerk. I know this has been done since the beginning of time, but in the computer age and scanning information, it seems to me we should be looking into modernizing the whole process.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I do agree it can be quite clunky or archaic, if you will. I think, again, to meet the statutory requirements that we have, we would have to have some sort of scanning system, also put in place some sort of signature system or whatnot. I could reach out to other counties and see, the larger counties, maybe Laramie County, and see how they process their vouchers or if, you know, I can reach out to other clerks and see if they have a more modernized way of processing their vouchers, for sure. I could be, I would be happy to do that.
I just know these commissioners in these big cities like Denver and San Antonio, their stack of paper that they have to deal with would be from the floor to the ceiling every week. So, I know they're not doing that, though.
Yeah, I will tell you, in the old days, I brought boxes to the commissioners for individual signatures.
I'm sure.
And I will say, I'm quite proud of the fact that our turnaround time as far as paying invoices is probably a week to a week and a half in 99% of the cases. So, I think that bodes well as far as my office and my staff and how streamlined we have done the process thus far.
We don't get paid that soon, do we?
No, you get once a month.
I guess my question is for Commissioner Laird. I think, I don't think the process has really been the question here. I think some of these vouchers that come through that are handwritten or have handwritten notes on them, that's where the concern comes in, is that if that's allowed ahead of time and we sign off on them, then what's to say that somebody doesn't handwrite something on after the signatures are there? And I think that's what the main concern is. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're correct. You know, let me give you an example, though. It used to be that the hospital years ago, the doctors and nurses would handwrite all their notes and the paper, the paper would fill this room in about a year. And now, they have a system where they do it all right there and it's all printed. And so, if you were in the hospital for four days and you wanted all your records, when you checked out, they'd hand you a copy. In the old days, you'd get it in about two months. And so, all I'm saying is, is that the chairman has specified one example and there's been others where they were just in blank, period. There is a Wyoming statute that says what has to be there before we can even sign them. And so, I'm always mindful of Wyoming statutes and think we should follow them to the letter, actually, especially when it comes to money. Money's the one big problem where people can get in a lot of trouble if they don't do it properly or if they spend money on things that they shouldn't or they buy things that they didn't follow the proper process for. And so, my feeling, Madam Clerk, is that we do need to do some modernization. Now, that's the best word I can come up with. And I know you guys, your office works very hard at this and I have no criticisms of what you're doing. I'm just saying that let's get out of the biplane and get a jet aircraft. That's kind of what I'm saying, whatever that means.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I appreciate that, those comments. So, I agree, you know, again, that a lot of paper to be pushed and whatnot. As far as the handwritten invoice or vouchers, once they've hit this point, they're not going, they're not going to be disseminated to any other department. They're staying within my accounts payable payroll office. So, could there be, could it be changed? Of course it could. I'm not going to say that it's not. But again, once they go and they cut the checks, they balance everything to these reports. I mean, there's checks and balances throughout the whole procedure. So, you know, anything can happen, obviously, but there is audit processes and whatnot in place. But again, I would concur that it probably could be updated and I can certainly look at that if you wish.
Ms. Chairman, yeah, Madam Clerk, I think that, you know, looking into it, talking to IT, they're somewhat familiar with programs, but also, you know, municipalities and other counties out there, probably counties is the better one to base any change off of. But, you know, at the same time, while I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Laird said, sometimes these programs can be hundreds of thousands of dollars. And in addition, you're, you know, teaching not young dogs new tricks. And so, it might be a challenge in a number of respects. But yeah, if you look into it and we can continue the conversation, I think that'd be great.
Mr. Chairman, something I want to add that takes all this into account. We were at a meeting the other day, Lisa Ingberston is on, and we were talking about various things that we thought were old and should be replaced and things that should be changed like this. And what she advised this, and maybe you know this, you probably do since you were the mayor over there, that the city hired a consulting firm that came in and went through all their buildings and programs and filed a report with them as to what maintenance everything needed and what improvements there were available. And she was going to get us the name of that company. I'd like to see the report to see how it was structured, but it sure sounded like a good idea, Mr. Chairman, because after we visited the jail and the jail yesterday for two hours, that was certainly eye-opening for me as to what kind of money we're facing up there on fixing things.
Okay.
So, the other things I have, a few things to go over with you guys, and you can do this later as House speaking if you prefer, if you'd like to move on. We need to set up some days for the budget hearing. Would you like to talk about that now or later?
We can talk about it now.
Okay. So, last year we did, thank you. Last year, we conducted the budget hearings on Monday, June 6th and Tuesday, June 7th. Now, the Monday, the first budget hearing was about 30 to 45-minute increments for the departments and then the component units or several of the outside boards came the next day. So, is that how you would like to, is that the same flow? You would like to conduct the hearings this year?
If I could get input from the commissioners that have actually been through the budget.
I think that worked out well last year, so you're talking about the fifth and sixth this year, then, which would be the Monday and Tuesday.
If that's acceptable to you folks.
I'll let Jim put his input in, but I thought that worked out well last year.
I think it worked well last year, too.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, what will happen, for those of you that are new, we'll have these meetings, but you will have your budget books presented to you. I'll have those by May 15th. So, you'll have several weeks in advance to look over the requests. Typically, there's a narrative in with the request, so on and so forth. So, you'll have that hopefully prior to May 15th, but statutorily, it's May 15th that I have to have those to you. So, but I like to get them to you as quickly as I can, so you can review those. And then the department head and the elected, or the elected comes in and at that time, they'll just give you a brief synopsis. We don't usually try not to go line by line unless there's questions, you know, specific questions that you guys have or they're asking for quite an increase in a particular account line or such as that. So, so I'll put those for fifth and sixth if that's your wish.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Health Department, the ARPA funds and the SLIB funds, we have been taking anything, any expenditures related to that out of professional services, which is general fund money right Just so you're aware, that at some point, we're going to have to start spending those federal funds that we have been allocated. And I don't know if you guys, are you all aware of the deadlines and whatnot of spending and of those funds?
And are you talking about the Health Department funds?
Yes.
Are you talking about the?
ARPA and the SLIB for the Health Department, yes.
And there's another one, the tribal, one, are there, we're not telling you about that right now?
No.
Okay.
So, it has to be obligated by 12/31 to 24 and then expended by 12/31 to 26. So, I just want you guys to know, one, I need to know when bills start, when we want to start dipping into those funds, I need to know that. And then also, there's reporting requirements that surround that. So, we have to be cognizant of that. I think Nick had sent out a few things on that. But, so during the budget process and whatnot and as these bills start coming in, which I'm assuming they're going to start coming in more, then we're really going to need to be careful to post those to the right expense accounts.
Madam Clerk, the, I appreciate that and we are aware that there are reporting requirements that come with the use of those funds. Here, probably in May, we're going to have some more clarity after we get back some responses on RFQ pertaining to the Health Department. So, I think we will have a better idea of when we might start getting in some significant bills. I wouldn't think that it would occur in this fiscal year, maybe right at the end of it, but I think most of that stuff's going to come in at the next fiscal year.
Perfect. Okay, thank you for that. We talked about, or there has been some rumblings about how our gas bills have increased. So, I'm having my chief deputy look into the Choice Gas program and see where we are and if we have, you know, what we have chosen, what we, our options are. She's out and then we are having problems getting people to call us back. So, those selections have to be made, I think, by April 26th. So, her and I are working on that. I just wanted you to be aware that we're trying to maybe get some of those costs curtailed, so.
And, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I just did this for a couple properties last week and, you know, those things are negotiable. And so, don't hesitate, whether it's you or someone that you're working with for the county, you can make contacts to, you know, all of the suppliers or at least, you know, a handful of them and then play them off of one another. And I know Black Hills Energy Services did match the best offer I had on some commercial stuff.
Yeah, like I said, Cindy's working on that, but we thought we would at least see what's out there and if anything to get those bills down a little bit. Previously, well, I know some of the bills went, or some of these selections went to a department and they threw them, threw the selections away. So, I thought we'll kind of get all that together and maybe we can make a difference with these bills. So, I just want to let you know that was going on. The SkyWest MRG, Advanced Casper had a board meeting, I believe it was last Thursday, and so they have agreed to supplement the county 20% of what we're paying to, for SkyWest, up to a cap of $50,000. So, I was appreciative of that. So, I'll be handling the invoicing and whatnot to them for that portion and also taking care of the invoicing to the state for the 40%. So, I think that was.
Have we heard anything from the city on them contributing?
So, they have had the discussion, but I don't think that they, they have not voted on it yet. I think that may be happening tonight.
Tracy, you say that they only, they only are going to go up to $50,000?
Advanced Casper.
When they were in here, they were talking $80,000.
They told me 50. The cap was 50.
I remember 50.
At their board meeting they just had last Thursday.
They wrote 80. But, yeah, anyway, okay. So, have we got, have we got any invoices on any of that yet?
Yes.
What, how much?
I want to say off the top of my head, $440,000 or something.
You can send it back today.
Okay.
Okay. Barn replacement out at the fairgrounds, I'm assuming that we are going to pay, I'm assuming we're paying what the insurance is going to pay, obviously, and are we taking that out of the one cent cash reserve like we did the previous barn? Mr. Chairman?
What is the amount, do we know?
I don't know. I haven't seen a figure yet.
The total's like $100,000.
Okay, that's a line item we talked about, another one cent, correct?
When we talked about the reserve, mhm.
Yeah. Everybody okay with that? There is, there is funds, yeah.
I would say that would probably be my ideal place to take the funds from, following suit from what we did with the last barn.
Yeah, I guess we're good with it then.
Okay, thank you. So, that's all I have on my list. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next item. Kyle Ridgeway, 307 horse racing.
Yeah, we all survived the snowstorm, I guess. I sent a, I think a lot of information was included in your guys' packet about what we're here for today related to 307 horse racing. As you guys, as some of you know that have been on the commission, at least Commissioner North and Commissioner Milne, from the jump, when we've been talking to you guys about what's happening in Casper, what we're doing, what our product is like and what we're trying to do, you all have a history of kind of what we've done there and how we've tried to approach permitting and communicating with the county and with the local officials related to locations in Casper. So, the one that we're here to talk about today is at 1016 South Poplar, also known as Poplar Wine and Spirits. Part of the 307 first mission is to ensure that Wyoming businesses remain Wyoming-owned. And as described in the letter, we have a partnership with the Reeds related to that facility. And so, you know, to kind of hit the highlights of what we're looking for today, or I guess this is a work session, so there's not a vote today, but to the extent we can get on an agenda in order to finalize the partnership and the transaction that we're working on, we're looking for a resolution to authorize paramutual wagering specifically at that location. As is included in your packet, I had a drawing set of that facility designating where the gaming area would be. And so, what you can see is, you know, I, because I live here, I'm able to anticipate the public's questions, I think, in advance. It's like, are you ripping vintage out? No. Are we changing the liquor store? No. There's a warehouse in the back of the facility where inventory has historically been stored that we want to remodel for gaming while leaving vintage and the liquor store operating as is, because we don't want to do anything to the nature of that business. It's a successful local business in Wyoming. We want to keep it that way. We want to train some people in longer term to learn what the Reeds know about operating that liquor store business so we can continue to do the kind of things that they've done successfully out of that facility long-term. So, you know, I included the resolution, I included a lot of information about the Casper market. And so, the way I kind of described it in the letter is, there's a feeling, my guess is, I think it's kind of a smaller minority of people, but they're loud on social media. I saw when the office went up for sale, everybody said we were buying the office. So, everybody talked about Yellowstone Garage, basically any facility or any bar is now a horse racing place. And that's not actually true at all. If you actually look factually at what's happened since we've opened the market, there are less operating facilities in this community than there were when we first started. In terms of total facilities, in terms of machine count, Casper now has less operating machines than Cheyenne by a pretty substantial margin, difference being Laramie County and the City of Cheyenne appeared to just be permitting everybody and they love the tax revenue, they want the tax revenue. And so, they have actually been in front of the legislature multiple times defending the industry because it's been a big difference for their community. In the projections and some of the summary information I gave you guys from our national consultant, you can see that the tax revenue from the existing facilities that the county is projected to receive this year in 2023 should be north of $3 million. As you guys know, the handle or the total bet in these facilities, 1% of that is tax revenue that's split evenly between the county and whatever municipality it's in, whether that's Casper or Evansville or Mills. So, you cut the number in half on our consultant sheet and, you know, that's your take number. So, the county and the city are continuing to make a substantial amount of tax revenue off of this, which is why a lot of the local governments are in favor of them. And what we think we've really done at both our derby clubs, the restaurants have remained really successful, they're full every night. You know, we took a facility over on North Center that was not seeing any traffic at all and that place is busy all the time. Our total organization in the time we've been involved in it, which is almost two years, went from zero employees in the state of Wyoming to, I think we're getting close to 250 employees in the state. Just in Casper, we're going to be over 50 employees between the Casper facilities alone. Since we've been in front of you last, our last facility that we opened was Cagan Corcor over on the east side. We have a location in Riverton that will be opening this week. We have a location in Douglas that will be opening in May. Ranahans, which is another restaurant. And so, what we've tried to do with our facilities is, we've described, is have other amenities, other things to do. You're subsidizing a restaurant operation that, as everybody knows, is a tough, tough business to be in, in this environment. And so, you know, we've tried to do a good job of operating first-class facilities, and we think this is another facility that fits that model. There's some food and appetizers available in vintage. You've got a nice high-end bar establishment there. You've got a nice packaged liquor store that's there. There's ample parking for the parking lot in the back. It's owned properly. So, I'm, I'm more kind of here to have tried to have give you guys as much information as I could in advance, and anticipate questions, but I'm, I'm here to answer, you know, whatever questions or concerns you guys might have. And I've got a lot of data and other information related to what you might need for us to move to the next phase to, to hopefully obtain an approval for this project.
Mr. Chairman. Kyle, have, and I know we've talked about this in the past, and I'm going to ask you the same question that I have in the past. Where are we at as far as saturation goes? And have you seen any change in, you know, are the numbers going down, or are they continually going up as far as the usage goes, you know, with the additional locations and stuff like that?
So, what we had in, I think I called it Appendix One, is a chart, the orange lines, the orange line is the county's tax revenue, and the blue lines are the total amount of operating facilities. And so, what you've seen is recently with other facilities either closing or not operating, the tax revenues stayed the same or slightly gone up most recently in March. And then, you know, we went from having zero market share to 25 to 30% of the market. And so, what's happening in terms of saturation, in my opinion, is the market is resolving that issue, because there's less operating machines in this community than there were when we first started. There are less total facilities than there were when we first started. There are less machines in Casper than there are in Cheyenne, as I sit here today, that are permitted by like 200, I think, on the Gaming Commission website, because Cheyenne's permitted some big facilities. And so, we think our model is rectifying the situation that folks sort of wring their hands about in Casper, which is, we have a lot of these, and we don't, we don't know that we like them, maybe they're not clean, maybe they don't offer anything. But the tax revenue is continuing to go up, and we've shown that at our facilities, even the Center Street location, we're continuing to see growth in our locations month over month, every month. So, in March, you know, I think that, to give you context, like, December was a record at both those facilities for us. January was better than that. February was better than that. March was better than that. April currently is marking better than that. And so, what we believe is, because we're offering a better product, we have food, we have a nice bar, we keep them clean, we employ people locally, we don't have a staff person that may or may not work there, and a landlord that's tending bar, serving drinks to our players, we own the whole experience. We think that, that, you know, there's not a saturation concern, because there's a facility that had 70-plus machines over on F Street at the O'Connell Lodge that's now in bankruptcy that's closed. There's no machines there, hasn't been operating at all. And so, our pitch is, you've been replacing other locations with ours. And you're getting a better product, you're getting more for the community. We've, you know, had a lot of involvement in the nonprofit sector. We're paying a lot of tax revenue to the city and the county. The numbers are going up in our facilities, so that means, you know, the money's staying here and being reinvested here through our organization. People are being employed here. So, to answer your question, I don't think there's a saturation issue because of what's happening in the market, which is, when we open one, the other locations are either having to close, or they're seeing, you know, reduced traffic, or reduced machine counts, or what have you, to answer your question.
Comment, first question?
Oh, thank you. I think you have a good organization. I think the Reeds have a good organization. So, are you going to start serving food over at the Reeds' location?
We anticipate that we would. Don't know that it would be as heavy as what we do at Cagan Cork, or the Pump Room, in terms of a full restaurant, because I don't know that that kitchen's totally set up to be a full-blown restaurant. But I do know that they have appetizer offerings and that kind of thing, and so, we would, we would do that, because that's an amenity that the players like to have. They like to eat. You know, especially seniors like to come and hang out and eat and play. So, our model is to have an experience where you can spend time there, and it's a form of entertainment, and food's a part of that.
So, the saturation element, I'm not sure that, for me as a commissioner, that's an issue. I think that's just an issue for supply and demand and economics and good business sense. Would you agree with that?
Generally, I would. I mean, there is a statutory component to what the Gaming Commission does, where they have to analyze whether there's saturation or not in markets. They're not given great tools to do that. But as an example, when Wyoming Downs came before, or the prior set of commissioners towards the end of their term in the fall, and wanted permission to add machines to some of their locations, and the commissioners here approved that, the Gaming Commission did not approve them to add additional machines in Bar None and at the Troopers Bingo, I think. So, those sites still have four. So, there's a statutory component, but it falls within the, the Gaming Commission's regulatory authority.
I see. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ridgeway, thanks for being here today. And I see, I don't have my right, my correct glasses, but I see at least one of the Reeds in the back. I have maybe a couple, I have a couple of questions, and, and one of them, I'd like the Reeds to weigh in on. But my first question is, what are the zoning classifications there at Poplar Wine and Spirits, and then over at the Derby Club on North Center?
It's a good question. I don't know off the top of my head. I, I know they're both commercial. I don't know if there's a difference in what class of commercial the two are.
Okay. It seems to me that the, that there's a little more residential over in the Poplar Wine and Spirits area than there is at the North Center area. There are a few houses, but, but it's more commercial. It has, for me, a little more of a commercial feel over at the Derby Club on North Center. So, one of my, I guess, concerns is that we approve these things if we think they're in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the county. And to Mr. Laird's point, while we want the market to, you know, determine and dictate things, we have a duty, and we're some of the only folks that get a say in, you know, protecting the health, safety, and welfare. So, I think I personally am going to be cautious about, you know, where we do these things, and, and want to do them in the areas that are best serving the community in all aspects, not just the applicant. Now, I think you guys have done an excellent job at the other locations you operate, okay? I want to be clear about that. But one of the things that you mentioned to me that gives me a little apprehension is talking about how busy, I think it says it's busy all, you said it's busy all the time at the North Center location, and I think you then said it's, and it's getting busier. It seems to me that, that you and the Reeds need to be mindful of your impacts on the residential folks in that area, and also in the impacts to traffic that you might have for, you know, the ingress and egress to that. I don't know if you have some response to that in terms of maybe what you're planning. I don't know if you have some support for, that you can offer at some point from the folks, the residents who live around the North Center, the Derby Club one, so that they're like, yeah, it's no problem for us. I think that kind of information would be helpful to me. Thanks.
Chairman Freo, Commissioner Nicolason, I'll, I'll do what I can to answer some of your questions, which is, we've done what we can in North Center related to signage to explain, you know, where the parking's supposed to be, because the lots are in different spots. What I would say about the siding is, you know, there's a retail liquor license associated with the location at Poplar, and so, my philosophy has always been, if the city has said there can be a retail liquor license there, the use case isn't materially different for paramutual wagering, per se. Taking into account what you're talking about related to them being busy. And when I'm saying busy, I'm saying it more in terms of revenue or our share of the market, not necessarily people. I mean, it's busy in that you went from North Center really opening and closing the restaurant all the time, and nobody purveying that liquor store, to that being somewhere where there is a regular customer base, is what I'm trying to say. And we've always worked very hard to be good stewards in, in each of the communities that we're in, because, you know, we live in these communities. I mean, I live here. So, I would be, you know, welcome to work with residents to the extent there was a zoning issue or an access issue, but I know the Reeds have been there for a very long time. And a lot of it is going to come down to, it's going to take us a while to get the construction done. This isn't something that we anticipate would be open in May or June. We're looking at sometime in the fall to have this open. So, it gives us some time to have the dialogue around how to point people to the right places for where their parking lot is in that alleyway where they've got a lot more space. So, I think we have a good record of dealing with those kinds of issues, understanding your concerns.
If I can just add to that, I looked them both up. They're both C2 general business at both locations. And then, I guess if you kind of look back, they're pretty similar to each other. Poplar Street has businesses on both sides, Center Street does, and then a block off of each of those, you run into residential in both. North Casper has residential running down every one of the side streets out there, so...
Parking. Tell me, I know the Reeds have a couple of parking lots, don't they?
That's correct.
So, I've never heard there was any problems so far over there, because I do know that they have a, a bar you can go in, and they have customers already, they have a customer base already, and I haven't heard of any complaints or any problems.
I'm not aware of any. A lot of it just comes down to signing it properly, and, and working with your customer base to know that there's that second lot. I mean, because as you know, in Wyoming, people like to park right in front of the building. If they can't park right in front of the building, they might just go on the street or something. So, there is another lot, if you're familiar with it, when you're driving south on Poplar, and you look over to your right, there's Poplar Wine and Spirits next to the gas station. Basically, behind that, or on the west side of the alley there, kind of catty corner, there's another large parking lot that's paved, that has some signage. And a lot of it's going to be, you know, us educating the customers that there's plenty of overflow parking in that other lot back there that's associated with the property. But I mean, we, we run the zoning numbers, because the city's got a zoning standard related to parking for how many machines you have. It's like, you gotta have, I think, .75 parking spots per machine or something. And so, we've based our machine counts to be compliant with zoning for parking, and we know that this would be...
Well, that's good to know. Mr. Nicolason asked if the Reeds cared to weigh in on anything, and I feel the same way. If they, Mr. Chairman, if you allow them to speak if they want to.
Mike?
Close this mic so you're not... Good afternoon. I'm Mike Reed. I'm one of the owners of Poplar Wine and Spirits. My brother David is in the back. The zoning on everything past Collins all the way to CY is C1. It was initially zoned the Yellowstone District, because they were hoping to get some construction going there. We were the only project that ever went in there, so we went back and said, we thought it'd be better if they turned it to C1 and tried to get more businesses. It has not been successful yet. If you notice that street from Collins to CY, most of those homes that are in there are pretty decrepit. Some of, most of them are rentals. Some of them are privately owned. Behind us on Box Selder, which is where our parking lot is, most of those are rentals. If you go to the north, there's one house, and then there's the beauty shop. So, it's, it's a pretty, I guess what I would call it when I was on the council, it's a neighborhood in transition, and it's going to transition, I think, to commercial and very little residential. To the east, most of that street is either rentals again or vacant lots. As far as parking, we initially went in, and when we built our building, we qualified for the city's parking area. We found that that was not going to be enough, so we acquired the property on Box Selder and built that parking lot out. Was there some opposition to the bar going in initially, and the package store, and the parking lot? Initially, there was. We've proven that we are not a problem. We, we have very few police calls. Most of the police calls that they attribute to our address are violations on the street, and they pull into our parking lot, write them a ticket, and that's where that comes as far as your history. I think we had nine on the last city council, when they renewed liquor licenses.
I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? All right.
Okay.
Do you have anything else, Kyle?
I think I would, I will say, you know, when, when we did these resolutions last, Eric Nelson was still the county attorney, and so, you can compare the resolution I submitted with this one. It matches the exact same language, just swapping the addresses out for the prior resolutions, where it's address-specific to the site only. So, what we've submitted is compliant with our history of what we've done with this group of candid commissioners.
All right. I guess I have one more question. When you talk about the O'Connell Lodge and that, the machines that were in there, do you know, when those, when they shut that down, did those machines go elsewhere, or do you have any idea what happened with those? It didn't go to another location.
I don't. I, I mean, so the way it works is, when you're permitted by the Gaming Commission, as part of your application, you're permitted for a certain amount of machines. So, if I came into, say, 100 machines, and I wanted to put 100 more machines in on Center Street, A, it wouldn't physically hold them, and B, you were only permitted to, up to a certain amount. And all of that's on the, the Gaming Commission website. I, I don't believe they would have been moved in Casper to any other additional location based on the most recent Gaming Commission meeting that I saw. I think a lot of them were older. I don't know where they would have put them, whether they even would have put them in operation, or whether they were just obsolete, or whether they put them between other locations that they had around the state. I don't know. And that location was operated by Wyoming Horse Racing, or the Horse Palace. I don't know where they would have put them.
Okay. All right.
I may, I may have missed this. How many machines will go into Mr. Reed's place?
I'm trying to remember. I think we penciled, we were looking to get permitted for like 75, which is comparable to, I think we're permitted on Center Street for 80-ish roughly, and 80-ish at Cagan Cork. So, it would be roughly the same size profile as our other locations. We don't always put all 75 in. Sometimes we start lower, because you want to make sure you've got demand, you don't want to have dead money sitting on a floor where it's a machine that somebody's not playing. But that's roughly where we were looking to get permitted, I believe. You'd probably start with like 50, would be my guess. And the, the other point I would make that I do find interesting is, is the idea that the machine in and of itself is a nuisance of some kind, I've found kind of interesting. machine in and of itself is a nuisance of some kind, I've found kind of interesting. Because to me, you know, if you've interacted with the machine, and I know some of you, you know, have been involved in some education about how they operate and how you can handicap on the, on the terminal and that kind of thing. To me, it's more about where the location of the facility is, the quality of the facility, the quality of your staff, and the quality of your operation. As opposed to this concern of, you know, an additional five machines is somehow going to create a problem outside of it being a parking issue or something like that because you're just bringing more people to the facility, you know? The machines in and of themselves aren't a harm from my perspective. It's more a matter of the global, how do you operate your facility and what is the quality of the facility and the quality of your product and the customer service that you're providing. So what we've seen is, you know, in terms of like our police call history, the Center Street location, I saw there was an article in The Trib that it was the number one increased location, and it had an 800% increase, which is a big headline. But it had an 800% increase because it went from like five, because nobody was at the facility at all, to 50. 50 calls in a year, and it's much like what Mr. Reed just described. We have a bunch of them where because it's on that I-25 intersection, you know, there are a lot of them are car accidents or different kind of things that have happened. The Kagan Cork location, I think, had like eight. So we don't have any issue with, you know, criminal conduct that happens at our facilities because we run them first class clean, keep it tight, you know, because your customer base skews older and skews female at most of our locations. So our incentive is to cater to that customer base, which is safe and clean.
And I would add that David and I will be staying for a period of time to take it through a transition. David a little less time than me, but I'll stay a little longer. Because we're old.
Don't say that. Don't say that.
Kyle, so this will be your third location?
Correct.
And any, any plans, future plans after that?
What I would say is, I think we get calls from somebody around the state on a weekly basis. You know, we try to be really selective with what we do because there's a model that, you know, Jack, the CEO, and I envision about what this should look like. We don't want it to look like Montana, as an example. We want these to be good, high-end facilities where you've got, you know, in your larger communities, a couple maybe. Because as we know, in Casper, you've got eastside people, middle-of-town people, westside people. So with these three, we think we've got those parts of the community covered. We don't have any current intent for an additional location. I don't want to say we'd never do anything because you never know what opportunity could be in five years, especially with the development that's happening around here right now in further out areas, you know? So, but right now, we have no current intent for an additional location. This would meet what our initial game plan was, which was to serve, you know, each, each part of the community in full and then, and then be done.
Do you take over the ownership of the liquor license as well?
We would be being transferred to liquor license, yes.
From their corporation to yours?
Correct. Assuming, there's some complexity around that, which, which entity's the one that receives the liquor license and those kind of things. But yeah, at a high level, yes. Assuming the city approves it. So we'll still have to go to the city to deal with the liquor license and all of that. So this is step one. Then we've got to turn around and go to the city. We've got to get them to approve the transfer. Once we've gone through that process, we still have to go to the Gaming Commission to get the third approval. So, you know, from our perspective, we understand that, you know, you guys want to take your time and want to do these properly, but also we have a transaction that we want to make sure we keep moving so we can get through all these phases properly, so that we can start construction and not delay opening by 90 additional days or whatever it is.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. All right. We'll move next to is Brian Connolly in Trona County, Whedon Pest. Is he here? All right.
What time are they supposed to be here?
1:30.
Well, they're looking for a place to park.
All right. I thought I saw, was Michael Brown here?
Yeah.
He was.
Do you want me to check with Michelle to see if I can release?
I can check with her real quick. See where Connolly's at, and then we can...
Well, he's not here yet? Okay, I'll get him a call.
Bruce Lapperson's here. We can have him carry on for a while.
Steve, I guess I didn't realize the Reeds were going to sell everything.
Yeah.
Didn't know until they said.
Right.
Another thing.
Hmm.
Yes.
Bruce Lapperson's here. We can have him carry on for a while.
Steve.
I guess I didn't realize the Reeds were going to sell everything.
Yeah.
Didn't know until they said.
Right.
Another thing.
Hmm.
And then let me know before that Price-Chamane's piece on the work session, so toward the end of the work session. Yep, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna jump forward on the agenda and we'll get down to the master parks plan. We're waiting on a couple more people to come in for another item. So the master parks plan coordinating with municipalities and the county. Kristi Turner and Michael Brown, go ahead.
Oh, I had it. All right, thank you for your time today. I'm here with Michael Brown to discuss the opportunity to participate in a regional parks and recreational master plan. The city parks department was awarded a grant through the Natrona County Recreation Joint Powers Board, and on February 7th, the city accepted the grant. The grant's for $100,000 in matching funds to create this master plan. The city parks department reached out to all the local agencies to inquire if we would like to participate in creating a regional master plan. This includes the town of Evansville, the town of Bar Nun, the city of Mills, the school board, Visit Casper, and the county. The master plan benefits all agencies by sharing all of the resources, and the development of the plan will help with the design and quality of the connected resources throughout the county. It'll allow us to build on our current resources and identify opportunities for growth and recreation for our region. The total cost is estimated to be about $200,000 for a regional parks plan. The grant will cover up to $100,000 in matching funds for that. The request from the city is that participating agencies contribute with participation and funds for that matching. The city of Mills has currently committed to $10,000. Visit Casper has also committed to $10,000. The town of Evansville is currently discussing their contribution in their budget proposals. And that's all the updates that I've received from the other communities. So the amount suggested for the county is a contribution of $15,000 to the matching funds. So Mike and I are here today to ask for a, one, a commitment to the participation in this regional plan, as well as the $15,000 commitment to the matching funds for the plan. The grant will be, the grant award will be released in the fiscal year 2024. Those funds must be dispersed within two years. So there's a couple of different ways that we could disperse that 15 through that process.
Where is that?
Unless you have questions.
Talk to me about why, what are your thoughts on having the city lead this and manage it rather than the county? Is the city because of staffing and the number of parks? It seems to me fairly straightforward, but I just wanted to give you the chance to talk to us about your perspectives on how the county's interests can be best served while turning the keys over to the city.
So when Zalima presented this, she kind of did a ratio of assets throughout the county. And that is how, when we were discussing this as, you know, representatives of what percentage are we contributing to the overall assets to the parks plan? And so they have a lot more in regards to city parks, playgrounds, those kind of activities, whereas we have a lot more in that recreation category for our trails, the reservoirs, the different assets that we have. I think that Zalima reaching out and asking for the participation goes a long way to the intent of the city of wanting to create a greater regional plan and connecting all the assets. So we're not duplicating all those resources that we can create different types of parks and different types of recreational activities throughout the region without competing with each other.
Does the fact, so I'm wondering about the real estate legally held by the city that the county manages, namely stuff up on the mountain. How does that come into play? Or I guess maybe a better question is, does the city consider that as being part of its contribution to Parks and Rec? Or does it recognize that that's more the county's?
They recognize that as the county because we operate it. They don't really have any, any part of the operation of it. Zalima did say, you know, they obtained a grant. The city of Casper is gonna move forward with a plan that, you know, if outside municipalities didn't want to participate, they would just do the city of Casper. But the group all kind of talked about it and it makes sense to have a regional area to include everything so that, you know, we have an understanding of how many trails are in Casper Mills, Casper Mountain, what facilities are where, and make sure that we're not duplicating something that another municipality already has. So that is kind of overall intent. And so she reached out to everybody to try and make it regional. You know, the reservoirs may not, it may be referenced to the resource management plan. That may be the extent of like the reservoirs, but Casper Mountain, I think, would be more involved in the plan, more details than that, you know, because the reservoirs are federal property, so we have certain things we have to go through. But if we include our, our long-term plans out there, at least that's included. So, you know, EKW's, I don't think they're involved in the state, but they are involved in the school district based on playgrounds and things that the school district has. So it's just an over, large overview is what they're trying to do.
I guess the question I have is, of all the assets that are out there, is everything gonna be inclusive added into this? So whether it's the reservoirs or it's access points along the river or the mountain, is everything gonna be involved in the master plan?
So at this point, I'm not sure because obviously they'll send out an RFP to get a consultant to do this plan. My take from Zalima was it was more MPO area. So it may not include Midwest and Edgerton, which there's few facilities there. And so I'm not sure if it'll include the river from, from Casper to the reservoirs and what the extent of the reservoirs would be involved in that. And I think those things need to kind of be defined as we go here more clearly.
I guess right along with Commissioner Niklasen's question, you know, we have a lot of trails, we have a lot of different things that are already on the mountain and everything else right now. And we're having a hard time maintaining what we currently have. And I just want to make sure that whatever we do, that it's going to be not just the best use for the city and the municipalities, but also for the county. Because that's what we're responsible for. And it's like you said, we have huge areas up on the mountain currently that belong to the city that we've been trying to get land swap done and some other things done for years. And yet, trying to get that coordinated has been less than optimal in a lot of situations. And I just want, I just don't want something to go out there and the county ended up having to hold the bag for a lot of things. I mean, we're, we've got a lot of projects right now that are in the, in the works already. And trying to make everything work together. And I understand that this is over two-year, two-year time cycle as far as budgetary. But I'm just concerned about some of those things because I, we haven't had a lot of buy-in from the city on some of the things that we've been trying to do and from some of the other user groups. So that's my biggest concern about this. I don't know if you, I don't know if that's more of a statement than it is a question, so.
I think a regional plan is, is gonna give us an opportunity to, to really review our current assets and determine what, what needs are, are not. And then a master plan, of course, is gonna end up being, you know, a 20-year vision of, of either the growth of those assets or the management of those assets.
Ms. Turner. Do you, so when we talked about this up at the REC board, and it was just in its infancy, basically, do you know, is she going to talk to the state at all about potentially outlining those jump-off points for the river or anything like that, or any state or BLM lands? Is she going to try and include that? Or, or just look at the, like you say, the MPO area, mountain area where, where people are visiting? Kind of more trying to have a holistic approach of that?
I think there's, there's gonna be a balance between cost and what we can include in the master plan. So how, how far out and how many, how many assets are included in plans for those assets? We do have master plans for the reservoir that as, can be included as an asset in reference to and then use our, our current plans as the basis for, for any of the decisions that are made in regards to that. But as far as putting it into the big picture of what we can offer and how to connect other resources to that one, that can be provided within that master plan.
Right, and this would be like a 20, like you said, a 20-year plan? And, and being exactly that, a plan, correct? It's not holding anybody's feet to the fire, require, any requirements or anything? It's just trying to set out a outlook of keep redundancy out of the picture between the counties and the cities and, while providing quality recreation for the folk?
That's my understanding.
That's my understanding of it.
I guess kind of where I was headed for it is, you know, looking at $15,000, if that's what you wanted to put into it, then what are we getting in return for that $15,000? And if the, the river itself and the access points are to be a part of this, I guess a bigger question would be outside of the county, outside of the city, have we talked game and fish or see if anybody else has wanted to be? Yeah, I mean, they obviously are maintaining their access points to the rivers. Is somebody else that's been invited to the table to be a stakeholder in this master plan too?
At this time, I don't believe they've been invited to BLM game and fish, but I can certainly reach out to Zalima and, and find out those answers, whether the BLM, the game and fish, and the state have been requested to be a part of this.
Yeah, 'cause I would, I'm sorry. I definitely would reach out to the BLM because with the development that they're doing along the river out west of town with the new purchase of the Marton property, there's a lot of stuff out there that the BLM ought to have some skin in the game on this too because it's a big part of it. And, and I do believe they need to, you know, if we can get them to buy in on it also, I think that'd be good.
Yeah, and I, I think Zalima's intent going regional is to kind of include the MPO area, the municipalities and, and up Casper Mountain, not the whole extent of the county or, or the popular 20-plus mile of the river between here and the reservoirs. I think she limited the scope based off the funding that she's been provided to this point. But I can get clarification on that.
Well, I guess that kind of comes back to, you know, we're putting our share in, but what, what do we get out of that, that share that we're putting in? Out of 100 grand, if we're putting 15, 15% of that 100 grand in, then what does that get us onto the master plan?
Yeah, some of my thoughts on what this master plan can provide is I'd be curious about what I call trail saturation. You know, are we as a community saturated in the number of trails that we have? You know, is it more that we need to maintain what we have versus add what, add to that? And, you know, that needs to be looked at region-wide. You know, we have trails all through the city. They're talking about more bike trails below the event center possibly in other areas, below Essence Pond. We've got a summer trail master plan that we're looking at. So to be able to have all of that information in one place, to understand, you know, do we need to build this trail or do we need to shut down these trails on what we need to maintain and whatnot? And so that's just one example. I mean, camping, that's almost exclusively the county except for what EKW is doing out there with a few sites. So that's more on the county than it is a regional-wide thing.
We'd be kind of getting a review of the trails and the facilities and, and everything up on the mountain then through, through this 1500, right?
$15,000.
Or $15,000 specifically. Even if we didn't look at the lakes and whatnot and the river, we'd be getting a good handle on the scope of what's going on on the mountain, correct?
I believe so, yes.
And then how it incorporates into the city as to how they interact?
Yes.
Ms. Chairman, you know, I, I think $15,000's a reasonable price to pay for having a seat at the table that allows us to consider and visit about and weigh in on a 20-year plan. You know, you, you mentioned trail saturation in, in town and, you know, I almost get run over because there aren't trails while I'm trying to run from, you know, point A to point B, which aren't, it's not just along the river. So I, I think that it'd be good for us to participate. And I also think that our constituents include people that live in all these municipalities and the towns. So I don't have a problem with it personally.
Yeah, and I just would like to understand the trails. I'm not a runner, so, you know, I, I use them recreationally once in a while. But also Kristi had mentioned that down the roadways, she's looking at kind of a county-wide plan and this could incorporate into her plan down the road here.
Well, and potentially with this plan, again, 20-year plan, a holistic plan between some of the major components of this county and city. I mean, that may assist even Visit Casper and, and all those and, and tourism and the economic development into, if you can show what's going on and what's coming up, what we have planned. I, I agree with Peter that, that isn't, it's pricey, but it's what it'll take to have a seat at the table. And you're either sitting at the table or you're on the table.
Do we have any idea line item wise where this funding, anybody's considering where it's coming from?
My thoughts originally was I, I would put it in the parks budget, the parks mountain budget, since that's the bulk of what budget, since that's the bulk of what'll be involved. Because the reservoirs, if they're involved at all, would basically be a reference to our resource management plan that we have with the Bureau of Rec out there.
And when are they wanting to start this project?
The grants released January of twenty-four. So Zalima is looking for, to be able to put together an RFP soon in order to be able to, to start right after the first of the year.
Okay. Mr. Mill?
This is a one-time line item type budgetary item, correct?
Yes.
So you'd have that extra fifteen thousand in your budget this one year, and then it, it'd drop off next, the next budget year?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Do you have some? I think, I think it's good that we have an inventory of what we currently have and, and have a plan associated with that. So, don't misunderstand what I'm saying. I just wanna make sure that we're getting, it's like Commissioner Frill said, I wanna make sure that the county's getting the bang for the buck for what we're doing and not just being a small chunk of it. And that's really what it comes down to, is I just wanna make sure that we're, we're spending our money efficiently. And if that means that we need to take inventory of what we currently have on the mountain, that's fine. If that means we have a plan, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to increase all over the place, but we're gonna be more specific about where those requirements are, then I don't have any problem with that. You know, we have a lot of different user groups. We have a lot of things that are up on the mountain, but I'm concerned about oversaturating our mountain right now with different trails and stuff like that. I would, I just wanna make sure that we're getting something that, it's gonna be a product that we can actually benefit from and not just something that says, this is what we have. And, you know, if that means that we have to shut down certain, certain locations, certain trails that aren't being used or something like that, and shift those to a different location, I'm all for it. I really am. I just wanna make sure that we're getting something that we're, that is actually gonna be beneficial to the county, and that's really, that's really what it comes down to.
Any other comments or questions? You'll propose that in your budget then?
Yes, I will.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks for coming down early, Kristin.
No worries. Thanks for your time.
All right, we'll keep you up here, Michael, and we'll move straight into the mountain campground improvements.
The reason I'm in front of you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, is, as you're well aware, the mountain road's going to be worked on next year with significant impact. I spoke with the road and bridge, and we've come to the decision that the best thing to do is to close the campgrounds for that summer up there due to, with restrictions, hauling trailers up there, potential issues with traffic and traffic control. And so, I see it as a great opportunity to do some of the major improvements that we need to do to our campgrounds. I'll have staff available, and if we can possibly bring on some contractors to assist with that. We have some rough numbers, which I hate to read out loud because they're large. So we have almost ninety campsites on the mountain, and they all need work. They need leveled out, they need gravel, some of them need to be widened for, for the camp trailers that people have now. You know, when somebody has a thirty-five, forty-foot camp trailer with two slides, it takes a lot of space. And so, depending on this project, I'd like to get it into my budget for next year to be able to do this construction. And if we did the whole, all ninety sites, we're looking at three-quarters of a million dollars. Now, if we cut that down and do just say Bear Trap, that's gonna be about a third of that. So that'd be two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. But, you know, we have tables and rings, barricades that need to be built, gravel for the sites and the roads, tree work to be done. And, and a lot, some of the sites at Bear Trap will, will convert to pull-throughs. So when you have a forty-foot fifth wheel, you don't have to back it in, you can be able to pull, pull all the way through. So just major improvement that's needed for our campgrounds. They, they, we've limped along, from what I understand, the history, we've limped along for a lot of years up there and haven't been able to put money into the sites themselves. So, that's my proposal. I wanted to see if that was acceptable to, to put as a potential line item in the mountain budget and put in my narrative a request for, for those funds.
Michael, were you, have you received bids on that to come up with that number, or is...
No, these, these estimates are based off of conversations I've had with my field supervisor, Joe, on the mountain. He's spent almost twenty years up there. He's got pricing on tables and rings and barricades, estimates on the price of gravel delivered up there. There'd be some concrete and rebar for where the fire rings sit. They usually sit on the concrete pad. A lot of the labor could be done by my park staff, which is two, three people up there, as, as long as we could have access to some equipment like front-end loaders and things like that. So, my staff over three months could probably do most of Bear Trap. But no, we haven't, I have not received bids or, or talked with contractors to get estimates. I just wanted to put this in front of you guys and see if this was even a viable project. I mean, having a campground shut down for the summer gives us the opportunity to have a full season of working on it versus the month of May.
I personally would like to have a solid number to go along with that. I mean, 'cause you don't, just as much as it could be three-quarters of a million, it could be one and a half million, it could be two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, we don't know. And so to make a decision like that, to say, yeah, I, I think it's a great idea to move forward, I'd rather have somewhat solid numbers to, to go along with the decision that needs to be made.
Have a comment?
Mr. Chairman?
I share the same concern as the chairman. The other concern I have is shutting it down, or shutting the whole mountain down, 'cause our taxpayers aren't gonna be happy with that.
Well, I understand that, but with the road construction, it's, it's kind of a safety thing. Bear Trap parking lot will be utilized for staging and material and equipment. So even if you do camp up there, you're gonna hear heavy equipment all day long. It's not gonna be an enjoyable process. There'll be dust blowing around, getting up and down the mountain's a deal. And so, I just, I just see it as the best way to do it.
Can it be done in stages?
Not particularly. We could, I could keep the archery campground open, which is four sites out of the ninety. So, it just seemed wiser to, to shut the whole thing down. Yeah, it'll upset the public. I mean, we upset the public doing Cordis Road last year when we closed Black Beach and, and Cottonwood Beach to camping. But it was necessary to get the road done.
How will this affect the people living up there?
They'll still be able to travel back and forth. It's just we wanna limit camp trailers. So if folks wanna go mountain biking for the day or hiking for the day, they can still go up there. It's just they'll have to go through the traffic control and all of that to get there. The major thing is the campers, the camp trailers and the large motorhomes. And, you know, one potential detour is Strube Loop, alternating directions. And, you know, if you lose a trailer off the side of that, it, it shuts the whole thing down. There's, there's just no other access except off the backside of the mountain.
Hey, Mike, Michael, have we, have you looked into any of the outdoor rec potential fundings? I know they, they said they're not gonna be funding playgrounds, but campgrounds and rehab and stuff like that. Maybe that's something that we can look at and we can do some end kind or something else to, I mean, it sounds like if you guys are gonna be doing the work, we could easily have fifty percent of the, you know, of, of a share.
Yes, this is...
And with that additional funding that's been provided, I, I just think that may be something that we look into or look at some other grant opportunities that would help mitigate some of the cost on this.
Yes, this is one of the projects on, on the list to be applied for, for the outdoor rec grants through the state. I did apply for, excuse me, the Bear Trap shelters and replacement of picnic tables and fire rings last fall through that same grant application, and, and we were denied. We didn't make it to the second phase. But I do plan reapplying for this, which, that's a ten percent match. And last time I applied for seven-hundred-thousand dollars in grant money with a hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar match, which was in my budget for the, the shelter and replacement of picnic tables. So yes, I plan on applying for that and, and any other grants if I can find them, but...
All right. That, I, I just think that may be something with the state coordinator that we talk about and see if, you know, 'cause it's like this time around, this next time around, they were very specific that they were looking at certain types of projects and certain types weren't going to be covered.
Yes.
And I just wanted to make sure that, that if that is something that would be covered, that we, that we pursue that and with the iron match, hopefully that would, that would help us out a little bit more.
Mr. Chairman. Michael, what is the revenue annually that we get from those ninety campsites?
I don't know that number offhand.
Ballpark?
Forty thousand? I, I'm not sure. I honestly have to look. I don't recall that one. I think I'm confusing it with the lake.
Okay.
But I believe the lake's a lot higher than that.
I, I would have a concern with just kind of taking the broad-brush approach based on the information we have right now. I think that I'd also like to see, as I heard Commissioner Laird and the chairman mention, you know, let's see what those numbers actually look like, but I'd also like to see some options. And you did mention the option of keeping archery open. Seems to me other options might include maybe as things get dialed in for the construction season, you can have one month of where you can have some of those sites open. Maybe you have access from Circle Drive. Maybe you have sixteen-footer smaller trailers, you know, a lot of those little pup trailer things, you know, don't have nearly the difficult time turning around. I'm not saying it'd be easy, but shutting down the mountain for an entire summer is a concern for me. I think it's gonna upset the public significantly. And I'd like to see you come back to us with some, some alternatives after you get a little information from Joe and maybe some others on cost, and you get some information to us on what could be done. You confer, of course, with Mike Hagler. And, you know, we have to keep in mind what we might do on the lodge anyway, so let's keep talking about it. But I'm, I'm pretty negative about just shutting it down for the entire season, all campgrounds.
Commissioner Mill? So, I don't think you're hearing no from us as far as fixing or anything like that. It's, it's, get some numbers. And, and so that, that is what I think you need to do, is go proceed, proceed with getting the numbers and then come back and we can further discussion at that point. I do have a question as far as the roads and, and the camping and everything up there, what it's gonna look like with Bear Trap Festival?
So, Mike Hagler and myself have had discussions with Townes Square Media going back to probably twenty-twenty-one and notifying them that this project's coming up. As far as I know, the plan is to relocate the music festival for the summer of twenty-twenty-four.
But then going back to Bear Trap afterward?
That would be up to them.
Yeah.
And then I, I do, I will share Joe's email with, with you after this meeting. He has line item breakdowns and quantities in here with prices, so it's a good start to show the detail that we've provided into these numbers.
That would, that'd be helpful.
And we'll work on that further.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, like I said, I don't think anybody's up here saying no, just we need numbers. Sounds like you got a few of them.
Yep.
Thanks.
Commissioner North?
Michael, you said that basically you're concerned for the big trailers. And instead of shutting it down completely, I would recommend that we leave it open to primitive tent camping, stuff like that, because then we can still have stuff. Then people can still go up on the mountain if they want to. They can ride their bikes, they can do other stuff, and they can, you know, those take a lot less effort, I guess, overall. And so that's something that I would recommend that we do, that if we are gonna shut down stuff, just basically make it so that we're not cut, we're not shutting down everything the entire process. We're only gonna shut down, you know, the, the big trailers and, and the stuff. But primitive camping with tent camping, there's a lot of people that like to go up there and do that. You know, and those, there's no reason in the world why they couldn't get up there with their pickup trucks and do that, so.
One thing to bear in mind, sometimes you shut things down, people don't come back. How would that, that whole thing with Bear Trap Meadow was what was going through my mind when my fellow commissioners started asking you about that, because I've seen that happen in other, other issues where you, you figure out how much money that that whole thing brings into the community. I'd like to see numbers more accurate as to what that may, what the cost offset is of shutting that down and doing your work and then starting it back up and whether we get back to those numbers and how long it'll take us and all that, 'cause it's, has all of the, it has that kind of an impact, I believe.
Mr. Chairman. I, I agree with both Commissioners North and Laird. Commissioner North, in terms of primitive camping, that could be an option. Commissioner Laird, in terms of, you know, shutting it down completely, you know, people might not come back. The only, the other thing I'd say is seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in one year's a pretty big hit. Maybe you do it over two years or, or three. But anyway, let's keep talking.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, let's move on from there to the Casper Mountain Trail Center, bid update.
Okay. Let me see, Steve's right there. I'm gonna bring Steve Adams from Amundson Associates up to assist in the conversation. He's with the architectural firm that designed it and helped with the bid. So, I sent out a memo April eleventh to the Commissioners asking for direction and recommendations on how to proceed, because the low bid, we received two bids, and the low bid was over, over a million dollars over what the engineers estimate was, and basically a million dollars over what we have budgeted for this project. So with that, I'm still in conversations with the Nitrana County School District about their contribution of funds to, to this. We need to finalize an MOU with them, which I've been working with Mr. L. Bogan over there on.
It scares me the worst.
So with the concern of the price, I, I provided three, basically three potential options with pros and cons. The first was to rebid the project, removing penalty clause and extending the project over two seasons. The second one was to award the bid to the contractor and value engineer the project. And the third one was to redesign with significant reduction in design, or redo, redo, ah, sorry. So with the concern of the price, I, I provided, uh, three, basically three potential options with pros and cons. The first was to rebid the project, removing penalty clause and extending the project over two seasons. Uh, the second one was to award the bid to the contractor and value engineer the project. And the third one was to redesign with significant reduction in design, uh, or redo, redo, ah, sorry, reduction in size of the building parking concrete and rebid. Um, so there's, there's a lot of pros and cons to these, um, you know, rebidding it, we may not get any lower bids. Um, redesigning will extend the timeframe to get to a building. Um, and, and sometimes value engineering, um, when you look at that, it, it can extend the time of completion and it, um, how you put it, a lot of times the value engineering doesn't actually provide the savings that you expect. Um, due to the decrease in actual cost isn't shared with the customer. Sometimes the contractor keeps a good chunk of that. So, you know, if you expect to cut something in half and you only get 10% reduced in overall price, it, it doesn't, uh, compute very well. And so I'm at, uh, I don't know where to go with this or what to recommend to the commission on how we should do this, you know? Dollars are dollars and, and I know as these things continue on, they don't get any cheaper.
Michael, has there been any discussion with any of these contractors as far as, I'm going to give you an example. I'm looking at one of them right now, a line item says others, 808,108.
So I'm gonna let Steve answer that, cause he's had a conversation with them on what that means.
So when you're putting a bid together on bid day, it's pretty hectic. So some of that, we, we gave a, a form for them to list their subcontractors and their numbers, and there's stuff in bidding that we don't put, um, just because we don't have all the line items. So they'll put stuff like that in their numbers. There are also a lot of contractors will put their general conditions, which is kind of their overhead and profit into that. So some of that is there, some of it's just stuff that we didn't put a line item to. So there's seeding and mulching and there were some tree cutting down there, just miscellaneous stuff that, that contractors can't at the time, cause we're giving them a little, I mean, we give them three, four weeks to bid, but this bid's in one day. And I don't know if you've ever been in that situation, but the last week of bidding is when everybody starts looking at it and all the numbers come in on the last day. So they're just frantically trying to put this together, so. Hope that helps.
Well, so if they're frantically trying to put something together with that, so it's not been put together with a fine tooth comb, so our numbers could be very well much higher just because of the process that they went through?
They have an overall number they work with, um, when they're, when they're doing the bids, they, you know, like I said, we give them time. So they come, they have an overall number that they think they need to. So then as the subs come in and get their numbers, it needs to match their overall numbers. So, um, there's stuff that's missed and there's stuff that's inflated, so.
Mr. Chairman, how come, how come, uh, the architects couldn't see this when they gave us the number of 2.2 million?
We have no guarantees when we give an estimate what the construction costs are going to be, Mr. Laird.
You don't check that out at all?
We do. We, we double checked with, with some stuff and just prices at the time of bidding. Um, since COVID, I mean, I, I can't lie. I mean, this, this construction and bidding and materials is just out there.
Are we making it too hard on these guys to bid?
No. No, it's the, it's the industry. I mean.
Well, it seems like that 800,000 is more like a possibility of needing a change orders approved and that kind of thing, but that still is available to them, isn't it?
Change orders would be available to them, yes.
And do the county, I don't think has any limits on the size of those either, do they?
No, you can, you can decide not to do them. Um, it depends on what the change order is for. So I can tell you right now, the project that we've worked on lately, um, in the last five years, our change orders are between 0.3 and 1%, which is way below average. Right now, most, most projects are running between 3 and 5%. So we've been pretty, pretty diligent on our drawings to get that change order number down.
Well, I don't know. I, I'm kind of thinking, I think along the lines of the chairman in some ways, I'd like to hear from, uh, Caspar Building Systems, I want to hear about their bid. I'd like them to, if they're interested to, to talk to us about that, I, because it just seems to me, um, it's confusing to me, let me put it that way. But it would be so much higher than what has been recommended by licensed architects and what their projections were on the costs, to be that far out of line with each other.
Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Nicholas?
You know, following a little on what Commissioner Laird, um, was asking, um, we had, uh, been thinking about what, a 2.2 million dollar project? And, and I didn't like what you said a minute ago, which is, we don't guarantee what it's going to come in at.
We have no way of guaranteeing that.
Let me, let me finish. I, I understand that, but you would ordinarily, um, figure that a contractor is going to have a profit and overhead built into their bid, right?
Yes.
The other bid had a million dollar number for their general conditions, fees and insurance, 1.77, 1,077,000. Um, but we weren't really even in the ballpark here in my mind. And so I can hear, and I have heard from many people, that well, COVID and material shortages and supply chain, um, but it seems to me as the professional in this case, that your firm, um, could have factored in those components and been a little closer on this, or, or there was something wrong in terms of the bidding. Now, I've heard that maybe there were concerns that it wasn't put out to bid at the right time of year. Contractors had made a lot of their plans and this was like, uh, a project that, you know, we're not that interested in, we don't have to sharpen a pencil that much. Heard another contractor didn't have a chance to get up to the mountain, um, was interested in bidding, uh, and would be inclined to bid if it were, uh, put back out there. Um, so, you know, I don't feel we have, uh, just another million dollars that we can throw on top of this and just say, you know, full steam ahead. Um, at, at this point, my inclination is to have it rebid, um, and, uh, give some consideration to the timeframe in which that it, the project would be completed. But, um, you know, I, that's how I'm seeing things at this point. I think we were all probably disappointed with how these numbers came in with the two bids, but, uh, we put a lot of time and energy into this and I would hope that we don't at this point, uh, start from scratch or materially alter the design and, and the concept that I think that we had reached consensus on. Um, and, and I know, you know, you guys, the two of you and the community have worked really hard over the years, um, so I, I appreciate that effort. The only other thing I, I'd ask, um, the chairman for is the opportunity for, uh, Mr. Tyler and Mr. Lamberson, um, to weigh in on this. They've been involved in this from the beginning, um, and, uh, they might have some perspective as well.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, if I can maybe shed a little light on a few things, the, uh, professional estimate was done by a third party, correct?
Correct.
Not by the architect. So they sent it out to somebody else to assess and estimate. Um, Caspar Building Systems, uh, had a conversation with Amundson about, uh, about changing the plan and going to a, a wood steel combination building and that would save them, or they could reduce the price by about a half million dollars. But the caveat there is with that type of redesign, I would expect ad services from the architect as well as their subcontractors. And the structural engineer stated that he doesn't believe it would save the project money, uh, due to the safety factors that he would have to implement in the structural design of it versus a, uh, pre-engineered building. Uh, so I just wanted to kind of add some of that to this conversation so that, that the commission understands that we have been talking with the, with the bidder, trying to find solutions.
Michael and Steve, um, there's two things in here that I have concerns about. One is the timeframe that you're trying to get these guys to go up there and build this building. And with the snowfall that we had this last year, the limited timeframe that guys can actually get up there without doing stuff, I have a hard time with this. I know that if I was the one that was bidding this, I would have elevated my costs dramatically because of the timeframe, because you know you'd have to put in a bunch of overtime, you'd have to have guys up there all the time, and you couldn't work within the schedule of a lot of the contractors. I think that's the reason why so many of these contractor costs were so elevated, because looking at these, I, I know a lot of contractors and I've done a lot of building and I've looked at bid packages in the, in the past, and some of these numbers frighten me. And it's not, it's not like I haven't ever done this. I, I understand the costs that's associated, but personally, when you have, have a building package, steel package, that's what this one is, and it's basically a simple package, I see no reason why we couldn't go in there and, and get the, get the foundation, get the flatwork done, get the, the plumbing, uh, at least initiated, get the building weathered in. And then these guys aren't tied in to having to try to go up and down the mountain all winter long on a timeframe, on a tight timeframe, trying to get this done. Um, I want it done right, but I want it done within budget too. And I think that that's something that we need to look at, is that if we do that, then they can work up there, they could still stock their materials this summer when everything's done. And even if they had to finish up outside with a lot of that stuff next year, it's not going to make that much difference. And personally, I think that's part of the reason why some of these costs were so high. If I had to do this, I would have elevated my costs dramatically because the penalty that was associated with it, the timeframe that was associated with it, and the location that is, that is associated with this building. I think those all need to be taken into consideration and because of that, I think that we need to stretch this out over a two-year period. Yeah, it's going to take us a little longer to get started, but people want to see things get started up there. They want to see things get done, but at the same time, they also don't want us to see us spend a whole lot of extra money on something for the same product. They want us to be cost efficient, physically responsible with what we're doing. And because of that, uh, those are just suggestions. And, you know, I know that's one of the options, and I think that's something that we need to look at real seriously about. Open it back up, allow additional contractors to go up there and, and have a bid, have an opportunity to bid this on a wider timeframe. Some guys can't always make it in a single day. You know, it may be something where guys, where you have to go up there and meet them a couple of different days, you know, give them an option. And I'm just, I'm just throwing ideas out there, but I think that that's something that we need to seriously consider looking at on this.
So Commissioner North, as for the schedule, um, Amundson spoke to two different contractors. One said they'd get it done in six months. One said they could get it done in 10. Uh, Amundson chose to put a nine-month timeframe on it based off those conversations. Um, what was the other thing I was going to answer?
Uh, the other thing is, is if you looked at the bid results, the other contractor that bid this job, I don't know that the schedules were provided to you or not, but they did it in a two-year bid cycle. And that price was 1 million dollars over the low bidder. And it was due to accelerated or to more general conditions, essentially.
But there's certain things that we could do that, that could minimize some of that stuff. If they had that opportunity where they could go up there and work on it as the weather provided, I mean, we all know what happened this last year. Half the time you couldn't get up the mountain road, and if you could, it was questionable. You know, so you're not going to be able to get equipment up there. You're not going to be able to do a lot of this stuff. Congestion associated with the construction site amplifies your cost. I don't care where you are, when you get a whole bunch of contractors in one small area and you start working there, guys are going to charge you more because of the inconvenience that they have to go through waiting for other people and doing things. Uh, that's just, that's just the nature of the beast and it, and some guys are willing to pay for that and some guys aren't. With this, I don't think we're, we're willing to, to pay an extra million dollars over what we had projected that this was going to cost to get something done like this. I think that's something that we need to look at. If we have more, more people bid on it, then we may have a lower cost, you know? Um, having two contractors bid on it, that doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get the lowest cost on things. So, and it doesn't mean you're going to necessarily get the best product for it. And I'm not saying anything against either one of these contractors. I'm just saying that we need to open that opportunity.
You know, I'm concerned though, uh, Mr. Chairman, with, with bidding this again. What do you, what's your opinion of, uh, bidding something again?
Um, it happens on several projects. Um, so the low bidder's number is out there publicly, so sometimes that helps to get a lower number. Um, I think extending the schedule will definitely help, but I don't know that it'll cause or create a lower number, um, because you got two seasons up there, you got to bring all your contractors back up, you have to remobilize. Um, that's, that's an expensive part of construction, so, um, we were hoping that, you know, they could get a lot of the majority of the work done, the site work done, get the building erected before the snow flight, and then they'd have the winter to, to finish the inside. That's kind of how it was proposed, so, um, you don't have a lot of, you know, heavy, heavy machinery up there trying to get the inside done, so.
I think to me, what would, what would have some influence on me about paying more for it is if, is if what happened was is that it wasn't properly, um, it wasn't properly and completely, uh, thought out before we were told that it would be a 2.6 million or whatever it was price, but that what we really are buying is something that's what's being bid. If it's worth what's being bid and that's what it should have been, it has a psychological effect on people when they think, you know, well, you can go buy the Mercedes for a million and then the guy wants 2 million. I don't know whether it's worth more or less, or whether you cheapen how you build it or whatever. Uh, I was kind of impressed with the whole thing, the way it's, was set up by you as an architect, and I'd like to see that done somehow, but I don't want to pay more for it than it's worth. And I don't know if that's what's anybody's mind. If it's really worth the 3 point whatever million, maybe we ought to be thinking about coming up with the money and getting the thing done. Otherwise, I guess if you put it off for a couple of years and who knows what you get and what happens to prices in a couple of years and what kind of weather we have, but I'm guessing now if they went up there to start working now, they couldn't do it, could they? There's too much snow up there.
Currently, yes.
So, so if you, even if you're talking about six months, the guy that said he could do it in six months, um, so if you don't start till first of June, you're probably back, you know, at some point under snow up there. So I do understand, that's Wyoming, that's where we're living. But these are just some of my random thoughts, but I don't want to turn off a project where we're really getting our money's worth, because then what we have to think about is scaling back and building something cheaper. I don't like that idea either. That's just me personally stating my view.
Do you feel that there would have been, um, if the timeframes had been extended on this project itself, and do you, do you feel we would have got more contractors up there to bid on this?
I don't, I don't think so. The advertisement for bid is fairly standard with the three weeks and, and like Steve said, uh, most of the bidders do all their work in a week before it's due.
Let, let me clarify. I'm not saying the timeframe that they had to get a bid in. I'm saying that instead of saying, just correct me if I'm wrong, you said that there was a, a nine-month timeframe of building this?
Correct.
So if that was extended out to two seasons, do you think you would have got more contractors come up there and put a bid in knowing that they have more time to get the project done?
Um, I'm not sure about that. I mean, the, the second bidder, uh, did put a two-season schedule in there, so we did have somebody put that difference in there. Um, my understanding is we had five contractors interested in the project. Uh, we had three attend the pre-bid meeting and only two decided to bid on it. And maybe Steve can clarify a little bit more on that.
Yeah, I don't know that, I don't think the timeframe had anything to do with, uh, with how many. how many contractors it got. We, we had one contractor was interested, came out, was out of Gillette, so the other four were out of Casper, so.
The requirement to be on-site for the bid, bid process, did that have any factor in it, you think?
It, it did have a little bit of factor with probably two of the contractors. That's pretty standard though, but I mean, we could definitely take that out if they don't want to look at the site. And that would open up some, like the two other contractors couldn't make the bid, or make the mandatory, it would open it up to them, so.
That, that's, that's the part that I was getting at, is that when you have a project like that, I think it does make a difference when you have to be on-site and there's so many other things that go on and everything else. I mean, this is, for us, is a big project. You know, for some people, it may not be, but I think that when you have to be on location or else you can't bid, you know, who's to say that they didn't go up there and look at it ahead of time? There's a lot of contractors out there that go up and look at a site long before, I mean, smart contractors go up and look at a site long before you ever start bidding on it. There's no way in the world I'd go out and bid on something blind if I was going to be doing the work. I'd go up there and I'd look at it, I'd look at the biography, I'd look at everything else associated with that before I ever did any kind of bid process. So I think that that is something that, that has made a difference, and I think it's a combination of things. But having people on-site, having to have them on-site at that particular location if something happens, they just can't bid. And there's a lot of questions that were associated with what kind of condition the road was going to be in, you know, what their access were going to be and everything else. So I, I think we need to look at all those parameters and not just pigeonhole ourselves in one little spot and say, yeah, this is what we have to do.
Commissioner Nicholson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On a different topic, one of the things that governmental entities do on large construction projects is have an owner's rep. I think that's imperative with respect to some of the larger projects that the county is looking at doing in the years to come. What are your thoughts on the appropriateness of an owner's rep for the county on this lodge?
I was always of the understanding that I would be considered owner's rep on this project. I have construction background, I can oversee it. The architects will be up there in their contract, they're required, I think, at least once a week, if not more visits, to make sure the general contractors putting the correct equipment in that was, was spec'd and materials and whatnot. So I believe that, that would be covered in that manner on a project such as this.
Do you have anything to add to that?
No, sir.
Michael, would you get us offline the projects in which you've supervised and constructed that are comparable to this?
Okay, yeah, I will.
I don't think there's.
I just had a follow-up.
Do you have a follow-up from them?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Do you believe that the?
Do you believe that the bids we got were, were proper and that we should take a look at those based upon the building we're getting and what the bids are? Or do you think in your particular expertise and knowledge in this area, that we are going to save any big money if we rebid everything unless we, you know, want to build a Quonset hut up there? I'm just saying that metaphorically.
I was actually very surprised by the bids, because we did do an estimate on, or had an estimate done on this, it was done several times during the course of the project, and it tracked pretty well. So when these bids come in, we were very surprised.
Well, do you have any way of looking at these bids and seeing if they're, that you shouldn't be surprised?
Yes. We had the, we had the ability to compare it back to our estimate, so sometimes there's just factors in there that contractors look at that we're not looking at, I guess.
In this situation, what would that be?
So, I mean, we have, during the estimate, we'll have a lot of our consultants look at the bids, or look at the estimate also and, and comment on it, so there's a lot of material shortages right now still that drive up prices. Some of the other stuff is concrete driving up into the mountain is a little bit more than, than if it was in town, but we tried to put that into our estimate, so. So I'm just, I don't know. Like I said, I was very surprised, and so was my entire office and the staff, that we put together our design team on these prices, so.
So is this the kind of thing, you would go to one of these contractors and say, could you explain this to, to us? Is this a mistake, or can you reevaluate it?
You can. And we, we tried to reach out, they're not very helpful right now, so, because it hasn't been decided on, so.
Okay, I don't think we have any further questions for either of you, but maybe if I could get Mr. Tyler or Mr. Lamberson to come give us some input.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Freel, members of the Commission, thank you for the opportunity to address some of these issues. I feel genuinely frustrated and upset. You know, it seemed like last fall, when we were meeting with the architects for the first time, Bruce and I had an opportunity to see some of the planar plans, made some comments, some inputs, got some things changed, some of which I think saved money on the overall cost of the project. But at the time, you know, I know emphasize that this is a project that would be best done if you could get the site work done in one year and then start the work on the actual building the following season. And the reason for that, and perhaps get a foundation in as part of that site work. This is an unusual year, but it's not unusual to not be able to get up there and do work in the vicinity of the Trail Center until sometime in June, maybe mid-June. Ground is super saturated up there and it's difficult to work. If you work it, you're going to, you know, spend a lot more time and money and effort. So, you know, I'm confused. The architect indicates that two seasons wouldn't help, it costs more. The memo that Mike Brown submitted said two seasons would make it more expensive. I just have a hard time understanding that when I understand that the contractors are looking at extreme conditions and needing more time to complete a project under that scenario to accommodate the extreme conditions. So I, I, I don't know if two full seasons is what's necessary, but I think that I would talk to a couple of contractors, maybe ones that didn't bid, and say, okay, if you wanted ideal timeframe on this project, what would you need? And I think it's going to be at least of, maybe 18 months if they can start in June and continue on through the next October or so. That would give them the kind of timeframe they feel a little more comfortable, they're not going to get caught with their pants down because of a bad year or other seasonal or weather impacts. You know, this project has been treated too much like the ordinary project in Casper, Wyoming, by both the architect and I think by Mr. Brown. It's not the ordinary project in downtown Casper. You can't look at it like you're going to build a building in downtown Casper and expect that everything should be done the same way. Putting a project out with three weeks from the time plans are available till bids are due with no really pre-warning to contractors, I don't think it's enough time for this kind of a complicated project, because I agree with Commissioner North. Contractors are going to want to go up and look at the site on their own, they need time to do that and fit it into their already busy schedule. And I think three weeks is too short. You know, I've been told three to four weeks by Mike is, is a real ordinary timeframe. Well, you know, we're the low end of that, not the high end, and I don't think it would have hurt to use five weeks, other than I got a feeling that, that this thing was so far behind schedule on getting out for bid, that there was some pressure to try to get a quick result. And I think that caused us up short. If these bids had been out in January, I'm assured by a well-respected contractor, we would have had way more bids and way more favorable bids because there wasn't a lot on anyone's radar at that point, and they would have focused on this more. So our timing, just in when we got the bid out, hurt us. Limiting it to three weeks to get your bid in hurt us. Forcing contractors to come up to the Casper for a pre-bid, I don't think that's necessary. Again, you should have made arrangements if the contractor wanted to meet Mike or owner's rep up there to look at the site, do that. But the pre-bid, if you need a mandatory pre-bid, could have been held in any office downtown and accomplish the same thing. Those contractors weren't going to see very much up there on the, the day of the mandatory. And the conditions were such that you were looking at four foot of snow everywhere. What the hell can you tell about the site? And that may be part of the problem too, is that they're having to look at a site in March and guess what it really looks like. So those are things that I think definitely could be done better. You know, I'm frustrated about what's the right decision here, just like you are. Dallas is right bringing up the idea that, you know, maybe it is going to cost us 3.2 million and want to just bite the bullet and do it. The problem is, I don't think we got a fair shot. I don't think we got a fair shot at getting the best price. Does that mean we should go back out for bid and take the risk? I guess I lean that way because I'm afraid that we're going to get too much criticism on accepting a $3.2 million bid when we've been told by the architects that it was, should have come in at 2.2 million. You know, I go back to some of the meetings we had last fall, and I'm a little unclear about how and when to change, but we were being told back last fall that the budget for this project was 2.8 million and that that was all county, and the school district might be putting in some additional. And now I see, when I look at the memo from Mike Brown, that the county's only putting up 1.6 million, and the difference between the 1.6 and the 2.2 was relying on something, hopefully coming from the school district. So I can't figure out where the differences came up. Now, the 2.8 million number that we were told last fall included $300,000 for the architects, so that meant to us that they had 2.5 million for site work and building. So I don't know what happened in the interim there and why that changed the way it did, but that, that's a question I'd like to have answered for my own personal benefit to know, you know, what really is going on there. The final thing is, you know, I don't feel like we're getting our money's worth out of the architects. I think they've done a less than stellar job here. I mean, there's just too many things that seem like weren't done as well as they should have been. And, you know, I don't know if they get that full $300,000 irregardless, but in my estimation, they haven't earned it. So that's really all the comments I had.
I, I just, I just think a lot of what we're talking about is conjecture. I don't know whether it had any impact or didn't have any impact. Now, where I would, I would feel really good if the guys from Caspar Building Systems came in here and would tell me, boy, it sure would have made a big difference if we got to go and look at the site first, and we did. I mean, they know there's snow up there, and I'm sure it is helpful to go look at the site, but is it, is it worth a million and a half bucks? I don't think so. I can't hear anything so far where there, there is, there's, it's, it's somebody's opinion on what this would cost. One comes from the architect and the people they hire. One comes from the guys who built it. Some of these companies have their own architects. So I don't, I don't know whether this was, I'm confused. I don't know whether this was a mistake or whether it wasn't, or whether it wasn't fully vetted. But I'm going to guess, if you went back to each one of these guys that bid and you expressed these concerns to them, I'll bet they wouldn't change their bid very much, if anything. They're going to say, this is what it costs to build this. Now, if the architects would have come and said it's going to cost 3 million, 3.2 million dollars to build this, these guys come in and say 3.2 million, I bet you we would probably go ahead and do it, unless somebody wanted to change the building. But right now, what I'm hearing is everybody's opinion on nothing. I want to hear from the contractor what the difference is between their bid and why they bid it at a different price than the, than the, than the architect said, and if it's because it's more for concrete, or it's all this COVID BS I've been hearing for three years. I just think that's kind of a bunch of baloney anyway. But I'm frustrated just like you are, there isn't a commissioner on here who isn't frustrated about this.
Well, I can tell you, I think bringing in these existing contractors is going to be difficult, I don't think they'll do it. And they've got a vested interest in trying to protect their current bid. I talked to a very well-known contractor, I don't think there's a big secret, Craig Pope. He was prepared to bid on this, but on the day of the pre-bid, he had another meeting he had to make, and he had to make hard choice. And he chose to take that other meeting. You know, he's expressed to me that he's interested in bidding this if it goes back out. And I don't know whether you could get him or somebody like him to come in and answer some of these questions as impartial. Probably he's not impartial if he wants to bid on, on the second go-around, but maybe there's a contractor we can find that's a knowledgeable contractor that would look at everything for us, tell us whether any of these things would have made a difference. I don't know if we'd have that kind of time. I don't know if Caspar is going to stand by their bid indefinitely. There's a lot of things, I don't know. But again, I think it's going to be really hard to say, yeah, bite the bullet and let's pay 3.2 million.
You know, thank you, Mr. Tyler. Commissioner Laird, I, my heart is with you in terms of saying, yeah, we'd, we'd like the low bidder to come in and, and explain to us what's going on. But frankly, you know, I, I think that the architect and Mr. Brown are the ones to really engage in those detailed conversations. I don't think that the architect was in a position to really tell us what the discrepancy, the million dollar discrepancy was today. I think there are enough issues and problems we've either identified, or Mr. Tyler has mentioned, that I'm still leaning toward just moving ahead as quickly as possible with rebidding it.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. All right, I guess we'll have some further discussion here as to direction that we'll go, and we'll have that shortly, so I'll be able to tell you, Mr. Brown, what direction we'll go. So we'll get back with you.
I think Mr. Lamberson may want to say something.
Did you have something you wanted to add?
If you don't mind.
Yep, sure.
Well, me and Commissioner Laird, we can both be pretty confused, I think. I'm confused by this, but a couple of thoughts. My, you know, my background to major construction on the mountain had to do with the Hogedown Lodge. Oddly enough, Phipps, who was the high bidder on this project, was a million dollars low bidder on the Hogedown Lodge, which is three times the size of this. So it's like, it's a voodoo to me. But what I learned from that and that whole experience was a few things. But what I learned from that and that whole experience was a few things I'd suggest, just to make it easier. Don't get too hung up on seasons. Two seasons. What's a season? Well, after many, many years up there, seasons come and go. I do know springs are a problem, but fall season goes almost to Christmas a lot of times. So, you know, we get in our head where summer is. Well, up there, it's different. There's Indian summer, and that's significant often. You get a big storm down there, but it's gone in a few days. So, you know, in the case of Hogedon, we broke ground probably in June, and it was about 18 months. But we didn't think about seasons. We thought about getting that weathered in mostly by Christmas, which is still not much snow. And then they had their construction trailer up there in the drift, all went along, and they worked all through the winter inside, and then the next summer kept pounding away. And it was a big, expensive building. It was just about $6 million. But anyway, there wasn't a shutdown. It was just good sequencing to where they could keep moving ahead, and there were some But let the contractors can work on seasons, but we sometimes get in our head what a season is. It may not be right, especially up there. You know, I share Keith's concern of the budget. All of a sudden, we have 1.6 million. I don't know what's going on there, but you guys can figure that out. The other thing was the owner's rep, you know, and if Mike is qualified to be that guy, fine, but he's got another job. But I'll tell you what, with Phipps and the Hogedon Lodge, we had weekly meetings with the architect, who came down from Driggs, Idaho, and the other architect was in San Francisco, and these guys built a lot of lodges. The city engineer was there every week and times in between. We still missed a few things, but we had a lot, a lot of time spent. It just isn't like, we'll show up when you're ready to give us the keys. That's a real job on a 2.3, 3 million, whatever it is. So I just hope the county allocates the resources because you don't have a county engineer. You don't have, I mean, there's a lot of things need to be watched after here that is moving along properly. And we spent a lot of time on that, and I think it really is worth it. The comment on the pre-bid, yeah, I don't get that. I think the, the inspection of the site is a good thing, but that pre-bid, I, I mean, the meetings should have been probably in a nice office with screens and, and facilities to look at plans and questions and answers. It's not a very social place up there, especially the last month, to hang out and discuss a project, I guess. So, yeah, and as I mentioned, there's not a lot to see. Part of the problem in this, when we jumped in, was, you know, poor, I, the architect had a minor bit of directives on this project. And that's what Keith and I jumped on last August and said, let's, I wish Jim was here, but he was involved in all that. What, what are we really trying to do and get them better information? And that's sort of where, where this redesign came. The other thing is the FFE budget. You know, once this is built, we got to take care of it. We got a fixture, we got to have snow removal equipment, not just the groomer that might run into it, things like that. So I have a lot of concerns about this, but obviously, right now, it's the price thing. Maybe adjusting the approach a little bit might get you more bidders. And what Keith's talked about and what you've already thought about, there might be a more amenable way to do that, make it attractive to the guys who might want to build it. But it's, it's interesting. It's a drag. It's just a drag. You know, and I don't have the answers there, but I don't think you'd be hurt to take another run at it and hopefully get what we want. But there's a lot of issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thanks for what you're doing.
Okay, we're running just a bit behind, so we'll jump into the Wyoming Medical Center Foundation, the Natrona Collective Health Trust, and the MHBOT meeting update.
Are they here?
I can't tell you what's wrong.
You can buy a kit for $3.50,000.
Are you here to talk to us?
No, I'm on the board.
You can buy a kit for $3.50,000.
Are you here to talk to us?
No, I'm on the board.
That's what that metal frame in our building costs. It should not cost.
Whoever's going to talk.
Do you want a minute? Because Kylie is going to come up here to speak to you.
She's going to step up and that's her turn. Until it's time. I think we should go. When we turn, we should just do that.
And then I just need my dress, just like this. And then I was going to introduce myself. Let me come to this page.
Well, no, I just know.
No, I hear you.
Let's just make sure.
Can we get everybody?
Where do I point?
Yeah, you will in a second.
Is it this one?
Are we waiting for Jim?
No.
He's not here.
He's, he's here, but I think he, yeah, we'll go ahead.
Just go ahead.
And apparently, I need to.
On the side.
So bear with me, this is the first time I've had to do this, but then Eric can correct me if I do this wrong, so. But this is going to be a combined meeting with the Wyoming Medical Center Foundation, the Natrona Collective Trust, and the Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees, which is being represented today by Eric Schlitt. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, great. Chairman Freeland, commissioners.
Chairman, I'm on the Memorial Board of Trustees. I'm a trustee also.
Jim Bell.
Okay.
I would just like to have everybody tell me their names, so I can know who everybody is.
Commissioner Laird would like to know who all is here, so if we could go around the room, that would be great. That way, we don't miss anybody.
Okay.
Jessica.
Yeah, I was going to do introductions for the trust, but if you would like everyone to go around now, that's fine. To.
That'll work.
Okay, Jessica Oden, I'm chair of the Natrona Collective Health Trust.
And I'm Beth, and I'm a CEO of the Health Trust. Do you want the rest of our friends and friends?
Just have them stand up and introduce themselves. I would really like to know who they are.
I'm a board member and finance chair of the Collective Health Trust.
I'm Paula Mongold, and I'm the VP of Operations for the Health Trust.
Kylie Gibson, VP of Finance for the Trust.
Rupichakow, Senior Director of the Trust.
I'm A. Cruz, Vice Chair of the Trust.
Lance Porter, CEO of Banner Wyoming Medical Center.
Eric Schlitt, a member of the Memorial, Memorial Office of the Board of Trustees. Jim Dale, Memorial Board of Trustees.
Thank you. I get everybody? Because I know it's, I'm happy to have this meeting myself, and I just wanted to put names with people and who they were, because I know most everybody from somewhere.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Chairman Freeland, commissioners, thank you so much for taking the time this afternoon to allow us to present. This is our annual meeting, where we have committed to present to you everything going on with Natrona Collective Health Trust. We actually really enjoy this. It's exciting to be able to share our accomplishments over the prior year. Just want to introduce a few people that are not here that are on the board. We have John Masterson, Dr. Mark Dowell, Jennifer Gladson, Verba Echols, Amanda DiDiego, and Abby Bro. Okay? With that, I would turn it over to Beth.
Okay, so this gives you, and this was in the annual report, that you have hard copy as well, but this gives you a sense of the gifts and contributions for the Natrona Collective Health Trust in 2022. So the Health Trust supported the Natrona County community through just a variety of grants and partnerships and programs. In addition to our annual distribution to Wyoming Medical Center of over 9.5 million, the Trust also granted 1.86 million in multi-year general operating grants to 13 Natrona County nonprofits and over 800,000 in programs and partnerships, including funds to support, for example, the Natrona County Sequential Intercept Model. And that's a partnership between WBI, Banner Wyoming Medical Center, CWCC, our organization, and lots of different agencies and nonprofits to really identify where the gaps are in delivering mental and behavioral health services, and then making plans to address those gaps. We also piloted a grant writing assistance program, and that is to work with nonprofits in looking at opportunities at the federal and national funder level, so that we're not leaving money on the table for our local nonprofits. We also distributed over $500,000 in grants to the Wyoming Community Foundation, and that went to pandemic recovery efforts and really assistance and support for our healthcare heroes. Our board and staff also, as you can see, personally contributed over $17,000 to Natrona County nonprofits, and the Trust matched those donations. Additionally, last year, we distributed the second installment of our 2021 general operating grants to 26 nonprofits, and that totaled 1.98 million. You can go on our website at any time and really look at where the money is going in terms of the grant distribution through the different cycles. That list is on our website and is up to date. Just today, by the way, we also distributed more than $1 million in our spring cycle grants. So you'll be seeing communications about that probably in the media in the next couple of days. But this gives you a sense of some of our nonprofit partners in the community. The, the larger the font, the, the larger partnership it is in terms of monetary. So again, that was Fall 2022 general operating grants and the second installment of the 2021 general operating grants. So next up is Kylie, our VP of Finance, and she's going to talk about the investment performance of the conveyance from the county.
So as you know, at the, at the close of the transaction, the county conveyed 40 million over to the foundation. And as part of that, we have invested that into our portfolio in accordance with the agreement within our IPS and set forth in our asset allocations. Just like the rest of the world, the, our portfolio was subject to a lot of volatility in 2022. So in 2022, we ended the year at 40,034,000. That is down 11.93% from the previous year. The conveyance totals 16.2% of our total portfolio. And there's a few graphs to show the, the volatility that we saw over the past, I mean, since inception, and then also the pie on the side of what, with respect to the size of the conveyance to our total portfolio. The values that I have presented today are unaudited, meaning that our auditors will be here in the summer of 2023 to audit all of this information. Also, this past year, we partnered with Common Fund. They're an institutional investor. We partnered with them to become our outsourced chief investment officer. So they're really an extension of our team, and the goal was really to diversify our portfolios into strategies that weren't, weren't able to with our previous manager. Any questions on that?
I think we're good.
So Lance is here to represent Banner Wyoming Medical Center, and he'll certainly be happy to answer questions I know that you may have after the presentation. But we did want to highlight a few things. We take our, our work to have that relationship with Banner Wyoming Medical Center, to monitor the commitments that were made during the transaction. I can think of really actually no better indication of our commitment to that work than the fact that we have Paula Mongold, our VP of Operations, really overseeing it. Her attention to detail, her diligence is really incredible. And so this represents a lot of hours of work to monitor those, those commitments, to have conversations in the community with community members, medical providers, et cetera. We are in regular contact with representatives from the hospital, with community members, with providers. We've spent a lot of time meeting with Lance and his team and collect, to collect the details of these commitments. As a board, Lance came to the board last week. We had a constructive dialogue and conversation, and I know that he'd be able, he'll be able to, to answer any questions that you have. But I wanted to highlight just a couple of things. Banner Wyoming Medical Center did make good use of the 9.5 million contribution from the foundation last year. They've spent over 6 million on the construction of a new electrophysiology lab, which will allow patients to receive life-saving care without having to leave the state. They also invested 1.8 million in new interventional radiology equipment to replace some of the stuff in the IR, one of the IR suites. But a full list of the hospital's use of this contribution is included in the annual report. They're also in compliance with each of the commitments made to the county in the post-closing operations agreement. And I'm sure that you know that backwards and forwards. I don't quite yet, but I'm getting there to have it memorized. They continue to maintain an acute care hospital, meeting basic hospital criteria. There's been no sale, change of control, or change to the nonprofit status, and continue to fulfill their commitment to care prisoners, and they involuntarily committed. The data for that care wasn't available when we delivered the annual reports. We wanted to highlight it here. And then here's information related to the care for the indigent. Banner Wyoming Medical Center continues to provide this care with its financial assistance program. Last year's uncompensated care was over $66 million compared to about $70 million the previous year. So please note, there was an error in the printed annual report for charity care, page 26, so that correct number is, is listed here in this. As I mentioned last week, Lance met with the board of directors to share details on how Banner Wyoming Medical Center is maintaining the essential services listed in the support agreement. And we're going to turn it over to Lance now to share those details and answer any questions that you may also have.
Could you bring that previous slide back?
Please, yep.
I didn't quite get that looked at here. Just give me a second. Thank you.
Sure. Before I turn it over to Lance, I'd be happy, and our team and board would be happy to answer any questions that you might have related to the work of the Natrona Collective Health Trust.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Great, thanks. Thanks for your presentation. We appreciate you and the organization's work on, I, I think, since my appointment last year, I have consistently mentioned that I think healthcare is a really critical thing in our community. I think there are some concerns in our community, and I think it's one of the strengths of the community, too. So a couple of specific questions. Does Banner consult with the collective each year in advance in terms of what it's going to spend this $9 million annual thing to, or is it more of an after-the-fact reporting?
Commissioner Nicolason, members of the commission, we do not, the agreements don't set forth any obligation that Banner has to run those numbers to us or what their strategic initiatives might be. We do work on an ongoing basis related to parts of the things that they spend those funds on related to mental and behavioral health, but they Before I turn it over to Lance, I'd be happy, and our team and board would be happy to answer any questions that you might have related to the work of the Natrona Collective Health Trust.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Great. Thanks. Thanks for your presentation. We appreciate you and the organization's work. I think since my appointment last year, I have consistently mentioned that I think healthcare is a really critical thing in our community. I think there are some concerns in our community, and I think it's one of the strengths of the community, too. So a couple of specific questions. Does Banner consult with the collective each year in advance in terms of what it's going to spend this $9 million annual thing to, or is it more of an after-the-fact reporting?
Commissioner Nicolason, members of the commission, we do not, the agreements don't set forth any obligation that Banner has to run those numbers to us or what their strategic initiatives might be. We do work on an ongoing basis related to parts of the things that they spend those funds on related to mental and behavioral health, but they don't report that to us in advance after the fact.
I would hope that in the future Banner could consult with you periodically and say, here, maybe not the specific things we want to spend a bunch of money on, but at least the general areas of focus. And then maybe there won't be surprises. I'm not saying there have been surprises at the end of the year, at the end of the reporting year. But I think you guys are uniquely positioned to have a good sense, whether it's mental health care or just healthcare in general, what our needs are in the community and maybe can help Banner with the stewardship, the good stewardship of these funds. And so I think there ought to be some dialogue on the front end rather than just, here's our report on how we spent the money, which I understand is probably the limit and extent of the contractual obligation, but I think it's going to do a better job for all of us if there's some coordination in advance. The other thing that I think is odd, and this is the second one of these that I've sat through, you know, we get this nice bound volume from the collective, and about half of it is what Banner has done. And I don't see a Banner certification in here that, you know, the information in here is hereby certified as true, accurate, and complete, for example. Did I miss that, or is this, it looks like just a summary of the information they've provided to you.
Commissioner Nicolason, members of the commission, that's correct. It's an ongoing dialogue, and so when we are working on this report, we give them an outline of, just a reminder of, these are the different commitments, and we're going to need data and reporting on each of these commitments. And then they give that to us. And then Lance reports in person to the board as well on those commitments.
Okay. So, you know, you always want to go to the source of information, and as an attorney, what you say might be considered hearsay if someone else can actually testify or tell us, you know, this is the information, and they might be in the best position to have it be as accurate as possible. And again, I'm not saying it's not. I'm saying that my preference would be that Banner's review and sign off on this section five, where there's a lot of, there's a lot of, you know, Banner is doing this, Banner has hired these people, Banner has, that's great. But at the end of the day, if it's Banner that's doing these things, I think Banner ought to be in a position to sign maybe a page on the end of this that says, yep, as it relates to Banner, these statements are true. And Mr. Porter can certainly speak to that ask of mine. It's not the commission's ask, it's just what I'd like to see in the future. And I think you can maybe understand what my point is here in that it's your bound volume saying, this is what Banner told us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Commissioner, you know, a lot of this information is provided by me, but I can certainly see your desire for that sign off, and I'll run that by my direct reports, but I don't see a reason why we couldn't do that. It's just certifying what I've already said to the Health Trust and just verifying that it's accurate.
Great, Mr. Porter. I appreciate the willingness to at least consider it. And again, I think there can be some opportunity in case some information that's relevant gets left out, or if there's a number transposed or whatever. It's just one more set of important eyes to make sure that we, as the representatives of Natrona County, get the most accurate information possible. So thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I just have a hypothetical. If Banner were to sell the hospital, who gets all this money?
Commissioner Laird, members of the commission, if Banner were to sell the hospital, well, the agreement, to back up just a little bit, the agreements that were signed by all of the parties, that if Banner has a desire to do some sort of sale, that you and we get that right of first refusal.
But let's say they sell it to somebody and not us. Who gets that money?
And maybe, maybe, Mr. Laird, if I can just jump in, maybe his question is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the obligation to pay 3.33% of the fund annually, is that, would that be binding on successors and assigns of Banner? Is that, was that your question, Commissioner?
Thank you. I like smart, young lawyers that can help me out. What I want to know is, not only how, he rephrased the question. I want to know if Banner were to sell this hospital, do they end up with the money if they don't transfer the money to a new buyer?
Commissioner Laird, just to clarify, are you speaking about the 3.3% that we contribute to Banner Wyoming Medical Center each year?
Well, you can break it down like that if you would like. Answer that question, and then what I want to know about the entire, whatever it is, 200 and some million. What happens to that money if Banner decides to sell the hospital? Can they retain the money? Can the corporation of Banner retain that money along with the sales price?
Okay. Commissioner Laird, members of the commission, the money that is held by the Health Trust is held by the Health Trust as a private foundation. It has no relationship with Banner. It is not held by Banner at all. It is now part of the investments of the Health Trust. The 3.3% would not go to any subsequent party. The agreements call for it to go to Banner. I'm not an attorney. I'm happy to, though, give my best answer.
Are you related to an attorney?
Well, I'm married to him, but it doesn't transfer.
I still don't, I still haven't pinpointed the question, but I'll keep thinking of the exact pinpoint I need.
Sure. Happy to get back to you if you think of it.
Anybody else have any other questions? Did you have anything else?
No. Happy to turn it over to Lance if you like.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman, for, thank you, members of the commission.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, if you could advance to the slide, I think most conversation is on the maintaining of the services that were in place prior to the purchase of the hospital by Banner Health. I guess I've got that, don't I? Okay. I can do that. So what I'd like to do is talk a little bit about each one of these, and please feel free, if you have questions, to ask me at any time. And again, this is reviewing 2022. I can talk a little bit about kind of where we are in 2023. But the bottom line for all of these for 2022 is that we have maintained all of these services. There have been instances where there has been changes within who's providing that service, but we've continued to be able to have that service available and are able to accept patients as they come to us. I'll give you a good example right here is peripheral vascular surgery. In January, Dr. Jim Anderson retired, and Jim was a pillar of the medical community here in Casper. They don't make Jim Andersons anymore, a surgeon that does trauma, general surgery, and vascular surgery. So when he retired, I had to quickly find a trauma program as well as a vascular program. And so, you know, that's, that is not an easy thing to do in a short amount of time. So right now, we're currently working with a group called Preferred Solutions. This is a group, that's what they do. They provide an interim solution so that you can continue to care for patients as they come through your door while you're looking for a long-term solution. Vascular surgeons are, it's a difficult recruitment, so it does take some time. But Preferred Solutions is providing board-certified vascular surgeons to provide 24/7 call. They have a four-day-a-week clinic and are able to help us maintain our trauma, Level 2 trauma designation. The goal, then, is to recruit vascular surgeons who will live and work in Casper, Wyoming. There's one of two ways we can do that. We can, of course, recruit and employ those vascular surgeons ourselves, or we can partner with somebody else. And right now, we are partnering with Casper Medical Imaging to, there's some good synergy there between vascular surgeons and interventional radiologists, both of whom do endovascular work. And so we are working with them to give them an opportunity to recruit those doctors as well, and they're having some success. And so we're going to work with them to bring those vascular surgeons here until it proves that that's not working. But at the same time, we'll continue to keep those options open ourselves. But the goal is to bring board-certified vascular surgeons here full-time. You know, as much as we hate to lose Jim Anderson, it's a good opportunity for Casper because these would be full-time vascular surgeons, where Jim and his team, like I said, did trauma, general surgery, and vascular. This would allow us to have a full-time vascular surgery program that could expand kind of what we do for the community of Casper and, of course, the state of Wyoming, being the referral center that we are.
So the surgeons you have now are visiting surgeons, so to speak?
That is correct. That is correct.
And how long are they here at any particular time?
So they'll do shifts of, it depends, we've got one physician, Dr. Umbrelaro, who is our primary. They've assigned somebody really to be that primary, and he probably picks up 50% of the shifts. And again, they've got to provide 24/7 coverage, so he'll usually do a week on, week off, and then they'll fill the next week with other providers. And it's not optimal. We want to have physicians that are living here full-time and engaged in the community. But as I said, it's, it does take time to recruit to Casper, and vascular surgery is a difficult recruit. And so this allows us to be able to care for patients in the interim, and these are board-certified vascular surgeons.
Thank you on that.
You're welcome. Let me see here, another good example here, let's see, I actually came on behind. You know, we look at neurology and stroke. You know, this is, again, something that we have maintained last year is that advanced stroke certification by the American Heart Association. We continue to maintain that. We have been working with Dr. Wheeler since I've gotten here to help him recruit additional members to his staff. When I got here, he had lost his third partner, and so it was just down to him and one other partner to maintain 24/7 call. And as you can imagine, being on call every other day is difficult. And so we immediately engaged with him to try and recruit a partner, and that has proven to be very difficult. So over the last two and a half years, I can't think of one physician that we've actually even had come for a site visit.
Was Dr. Wheeler, did he leave the hospital?
He has not, no. In 20, now we're talking, looking forward, about 60 days ago, he did tender his resignation as the stroke medical director, and that is the reason, is because he lost his second partner. So he, in his own private practice, he is now the only neurologist. And so as you can imagine, taking 24/7 call for stroke when they can call at all times during the day, it's not, it's not elective procedure.
Who's handling the stroke issues?
So Dr. Wheeler is right now. And so, but, but as I said, it's not, it's not sustainable. And so what he has decided to do is resign so that he can focus on his outpatient work. He's let me know that he is going to stay in Casper, but focusing on outpatient, because it's not a good work-life balance.
When is his resignation effective?
May 1st is when he will be done.
And so what do you have planned for stroke care then?
So again, 60 days ago, I was given that resignation and had 90 days to find a solution. And so we are going to be partnering with a group called Blue Sky, I'm sorry. This is my second presentation today that I've given. Blue Sky, which is a large neurology group that has a footprint in both Colorado and Wyoming that provides telestroke and tele-neurohospital services.
We're going to have, we're going to have TV doctors?
Well, TV doctors, I think, is a simplification of what they do. You know, these doctors, there's two groups. There's doctors that specialize in stroke. And so what they will do is they will be at the bedside virtually. You know, obviously, we hate to lose Dr. Wheeler. For so many years, he had, you know, he created a program that was second to none, was an excellent partner, but created a-
Let me back up. You said you're going to have doctors by the bedside virtually, so the TV's by the bedside, not the doctor. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this.
That is correct. That is correct. But it's more than just a TV. There's interaction, there's the ability for those doctors to be able to work with the staff on the ground, to be able to get the information that they need to consult patients on that patient care. And then we still have the structure that surrounds those doctors. We have the vascular surgeons, we've got the interventional radiologist, we've got the neurosurgeons necessary to provide that intervention in a timely manner. As a matter of fact, those carts, those telecarts can be wheeled right into the CT scan room where the interventional radiologist, the one who does the hands-on intervention, can consult in real time. To let you know kind of the faith that some of our medical staff have in this is, one of our interventional radiologists, Dr. Balkly, is willing to be the medical director now of the stroke program, taking over for Dr. Wheeler. He's the guy that's going to be hands-on in that room, working with those neurologists. Now, I am not going to say that having telemedicine is the same as having a doctor in the room. Doctor, again, Dr. Wheeler's fantastic, but the reason that we could not recruit over the last two and a half years is because neurology has changed over those two and a half years. There are very few neurologists that want to do what Dr. Wheeler does, and that's have a full-time outpatient clinic and then come to the hospital, see inpatients, and take 24/7 call. Nobody wants to do that work anymore. They either do outpatient or they do inpatient. And so many hospitals across this country have adopted a tele-neurology program, but again, supported by physicians and staff that are in person, in the room, where it is necessary to provide that care. You know, we have run this by the American Heart Association. We will be able to maintain our advanced stroke program as many hospitals across this country have done. It's a change in the environment that we're dealing with, and I think we've moved very quickly to find a good partner who's willing to be there. In addition, they also provide neurohospitals. These are neurologists that just focus on that inpatient side and dealing with those patients, whether it's stroke or some other neurological disability. And again, they are there to provide that care 24/7 and to support our staff in doing that, support the ICU, support the hospilist. You know, that is, that is what they do full-time 24/7.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Porter, thanks for being here today. I have some questions, but I think I'll stick with some of this advanced stroke care center. My understanding, though, is that Dr. Wheeler is going to work for Summit moving forward. Is he also going to be, is that your information, is he also going to be doing some work at WMC Banner?
So I've heard that rumor as well. I have asked Dr. Wheeler what his plans are, and what he has told me is that he is going to be focusing on his outpatient. It would surprise me if he worked for Summit because Summit does not provide stroke care. At this moment, they are a surgical hospital. They do not see strokes, they do not have the capability to do strokes, they do not have the program that would surround a neurologist like himself. They don't do interventional radiology, they don't do vascular surgery, neurosurgery. And so for them tomorrow to start partnering with Dr. Wheeler to provide stroke care is inconceivable. They would not be able to do that.
One of the things I've heard is that stroke patients might be transferred to Greeley for care at Banner's hospital down there. And I just wanted to be direct with you and ask you and give you the opportunity to help me understand how that could happen, if it were to happen, or how that might be part of the plan, you know, what you've referred to as the approved or soon-to-be-approved advanced stroke center, you know, status that we have and enjoy and that I think is quite remarkable for a hospital in the community of this size. Can you speak a little more to, you know, the Greeley facility and how that might treat stroke patients, and then just maybe kind of the Greeley facility in general and its relationship in patient care, Natrona County patients, and how care might be sent down that way, or they might be sent down that way?
Can I thank you for that question? Because there are a lot of rumors out there, and rumors cause contention, rumors cause misinformation that is detrimental to the relationship. And I would rather answer those questions upfront like this than to have them perpetuate and lead that kind of mistrust when they're not founded anything. Just a quick antidote, I gave a talk this morning at the Rural Health Symposium. They asked me to give a speak as one of the keynote speakers. And as we were sitting around the table, I was talking to a gentleman that said, hey, I heard that the CEO of Rawlins is going to be, become the- I heard that the CEO of Rawlins is going to become the CEO of the new hospital in Pinedale. I spoke with that CEO last week, and he never mentioned it, so I said, that would totally surprise me. We quickly looked it up, and it wasn't true. But there we go. We started a rumor that if we hadn't verified, you know, we just kind of threw that idea out on the table, and all of a sudden, the CEO from Rawlins is going to Pinedale. And so those kind of rumors, whether intentional or not, can get started like that and be disruptive. So thank you for asking that question. Our stroke patients will not be transferred to Greeley. There's no reason for them to be transferred to Greeley. That's why we are going down this road of establishing strong neurology partners, both for the stroke as well as the neurohospitals. At no part of any of our plans is any of the workflows that we're working at now, the option of, if we reach this point, we will transfer to Greeley. To let you know, when we look at Greeley, they about provide the same level of care that we do. At one point, that wasn't true because they actually had a burn center. So they actually had a higher level of care that they could provide in those areas. But right now, they've actually closed down their burn center because of the market situation in Colorado and the extreme expense of maintaining a burn center and the volumes of patients. But other than that, we provide almost the same level of care for Greeley. So if we're going to go to Denver for any care or go to Colorado for any care, that higher level, it's usually to Swedish Medical Center, Level 1 Trauma Center, which we are not, and nor is Greeley. And so strokes, there is no intention in any of our workflows that says we will go to Greeley with these patients. Our goal is to keep patients here. As a matter of fact, we are maintaining the contracts we have for our spoke sites. And so our intention is to make sure that when they send a patient to us, we provide that full spectrum of care. And again, that's supported by that advanced stroke certification by the American Heart Association, that we're going to continue to be fully engaged and committed to caring for those patients here in Wyoming.
Speaking of rumors, the rumor I heard was that you were going to-
Yeah.
Oh, are you finished?
No, I can't hear you.
Speaking of rumors, I heard a rumor that there was a plan to send a child down to Phoenix, and that that didn't happen because the child here recovered without being transferred. Is there any truth to that rumor?
Mr. Commissioner, I have not heard of that, and I cannot imagine why we would go to send the patient to Phoenix unless it was a specialty that was not in Colorado or-
It was a specialty, I think.
Are you familiar with what that was?
I don't recall, they told me, but I don't recall.
Okay. The only thing I can think of, and again, well, I hate to even say anything because that's how rumors are started, but in Phoenix, they do have pediatric specialties. They've got MD Anderson down there where they have pediatric cancer specialists that they may have been referred to. But that would be a level of care that we would not provide in Wyoming anywhere. And so that consultation, if it had been happened, would have happened with the family. But if the patient recovered, it certainly wasn't cancer. And so if you can provide me with any other detail, I can look into that. And respecting patient privacy, I can look into that. But I can't imagine why we would send a patient to Phoenix when we have children's hospitals in Colorado.
I think the matter was resolved because the patient recovered here and they didn't, wasn't required to be sent anyway.
Yeah, I'd be very curious of what that was. So, but yeah, I'd be willing to look into that if you have any other detail.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Porter, it sounds like there have been a couple moves to telehealth, a couple moves to contracting with specialty groups. Blue Sky was one, and I guess Casper Medical Imaging is another one for vascular. Was it CMI or was it a different?
Uh, CMI, yes.
So CMI. Is that what Banner is moving toward in general, Banner Corporate, not just Wyoming? And is that, you know, best practices? Is that the direction that Banner's going to be heading at Wyoming Medical Center? Or is this a temporary situation, we're going to try to get, you know, boots on the ground here?
Mr. Commissioner, thank you for that question. Just for clarification, the recruitment for vascular, that is for in-person, living here in Casper. Preferred Solutions is also has in-persons. Vascular surgery is not something that can be done remotely, requires a physician to be here. There are other specialties that lend themselves to telehealth.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I was confused because I was thinking, though, that some of the interventional radiology is also moving toward telemedicine. And so maybe that was the other one in my mind with Blue Sky that is going that direction?
No, interventional radiology is, does not lend itself to telemedicine. And so I, there have not been any conversations between myself, CMI, regarding vascular surgery, interventional radiology, that would be dealing with telemedicine and that. I can't, I can't think of how that would be, how that would work even.
Well, then speak to the areas in which that you have moved or are moving to telemedicine and whether or not those things are basically in the best interest of our patients in the county.
Yeah. So the example, thank you, Mr. Commissioner, for that clarification. So our stroke program is a perfect example of that. Is telemedicine the same as having a physician in the room? No, it is not. You know, they're, having the physician in the room allows you to build relationships with those doctors and just, it builds a feeling of trust. The question has to be, is it sustainable? And the answer to that is no. It's nice to have, but in the world today with recruitment and the shortage of physicians, it is not sustainable. When I got here in Casper, as I looked over the arrangement that we have with Dr. Wheeler and knowing his difficulty with recruitment, the first thing that came to my mind is this is scary. We are one physician away from losing our stroke program. And then sure enough, two years later, Dr. Wheeler gave me his resignation, and I found myself having to scramble to find a stroke program. To be one physician away from losing your program is not a good position to be in. And so that's why we're partnering with a larger organization that has a deeper bench strength. Already, they have privileged six neurologists. And so if one can't be there, they've got backup. And again, these are fellowship-trained neurologists in stroke. And so it's a level of comfort, it's a level of reliability that does come as an advantage of having a telemedicine program. And again, we are not the only hospital in the country that relies on telemedicine. Most hospitals that are not academic medical centers do rely on that for neurology. It is common, it is accepted practice, and is accepted by the American Heart Association for care. You know, the question is, is our future telemedicine? And the answer is no, but it will have certain areas where it will have its place. I encourage you, if you have not done it, to read the Surgeon General's report that he put out in 2022 on workplace burnout. And I just, actually, I spoke about it this morning, and he said that within the next, you know, by 2033, they're expecting that there will be a shortage of between 50,000 and 150,000 physicians across the country. Medical schools are not putting out enough doctors to meet that need. Plus, you pair that with the fact that we have an aging population. People have more complex chronic diseases that they're living with and living longer. And so how do we manage those patients with fewer doctors? And what we're going to see is a combination of using physician extenders. Those are nurse practitioners, physician assistants, and telemedicine where it is appropriate, where a physician can do a telemedicine clinic and see more patients in a day than they could in an inpatient situation or an in-person situation. That's not a Banner Health thing, that is what is happening across the country because of the situation we find ourselves in healthcare. The challenge will be to pivot and find solutions for that, and sometimes that will be telemedicine. Right now, where we're looking at telemedicine is in stroke, and we have also implemented EICU. But that requires a lot of clarification. In the last legislative session, there was a gentleman, one of our representatives stood up and said that there were no doctors in our ICU, which frankly could not happen. We would be shut down, our ICU would be shut down by the Joint Commission if we had no doctors in the ICU. And I can tell you today that we are staffing 24/7 with ICU physicians today. What we have in the background is we have EICU. It's a Plan B. Again, when you have an ICU like we have at Wyoming Medical Center, you've got one doctor during the day shift, and you've got one doctor on at nights. If one of those doctors can't get in because of snow, because they're sick, you've got to have a Plan B. And we found that to be extremely difficult during COVID, as we saw our volumes going from managing a 14-bed ICU to a 22-bed ICU, and that one physician having to stretch and cover that many beds. What's our Plan B? How do we continue to be there for the state of Wyoming with one doctor that can get sick, that can get an accident on the way to the hospital? We've got to have a Plan B. And so we implemented Banner's EICU program, which is used in almost all of their hospitals, except for the academic medical centers, as a backup. And again, that is, if you look at the literature, that is a very acceptable thing to do. You can go to Billings Clinic, Mayo Clinic, they back up their doctors with EICU.
Let me interrupt just a second. How many locum tenens doctors do you have working at the hospital here right now?
So right now, all of our night shifts are filled with locums. And during the day, we bring in Banner Health, either ICU physicians or EICU physicians that come up here to do in-person shifts. So we've tried to-
Locum tenens doctors means a substitute doctor who doesn't live here, true?
That is correct. They are filling a gap while we recruit.
Right. And so you know the number? You know the number?
I couldn't tell you the exact number. But we've, but we've got, you know, every day, we have to have a day shift.
Twenty, thirty of them? Forty of them?
I couldn't tell you the exact number, but I can bring that back to you. But I think the relevant point, though, is that we have an intensivist in the, during the day, and we have an intensivist at night. sole purpose is to keep that up. Plus, now, there's two things. We have EICU as a backup, doing what they can, it doesn't require a person in the room, medication management, airway management, certain things like that, that it doesn't take an intensivist, they can relieve them. But then also, we are now an ACS-designated Level 2 Trauma Center. You know, as we talk about changes, we often overlook what we've done to actually improve the health care in Wyoming. And getting that American College of Surgeons Level 2 Trauma designation means that we're offering actually a higher level of care to trauma patients that come in there. There's a halo effect of that as well, if you will, in that these are fellowship-trained traumatologists, which means they, part of their fellowship and training was as surgical ICU physicians. And so now they are also there and available to help support the surgical ICU patients. So now not only do we have 24/7 intensivists and providers, we have a backup of EICU, now we have fellowship-trained traumatologists to help support the surgical ICU patients.
So what's the population at the hospital? Somebody told me it was down 50%. Is that true?
Are you talking about the average day census?
Patients.
No, that is not true. If you look at where we were prior to COVID, we were about at that number. At COVID, we were up to 170. Yesterday, we hit a spike of 150. But again, that is a number that, I've been a hospital CEO for almost a decade now. There are a lot of things that go into the actual number. There are seasonal patterns, you know, where you'll have more trauma, where you'll have more sickness. We just got through with an RSV, a historical RSV and flu season where our pediatric unit was full. That doesn't happen every year. And so we have not, we're not at 50% occupancy. Matter of fact, we're peaking right now, at 150, down from COVID, of course, but that was an unusual situation.
I had one more question. You came to the office and we visited for about an hour, which I appreciated. And I advise you, we were going to put on the website the, what I think is a public document, which was the sales documents by the county to you. I advised you of that. And then my understanding is, is you asked that those would be removed, and they've been removed now for about a month. Is it time we can put them back up? Is that okay with you now?
So when that request came to me, being the good administrator I am, I wanted to check with my legal counsel, as you would understand on that. And we just had a few concerns over some exhibits, which was private information, had information about, for example, the VIN numbers of our emergency vehicle, stuff at the public. It's not relevant to the sale of the hospital and really no reason to be out there. We made those requests of the-
Were they sold by us to you, though?
The-
The vehicles?
Yes, we inherited some of those, others we've purchased since then. But they were, it was a simple request, I gave that information back, and I believe the ball is in your court right now. With those exceptions of those few exhibits, we gave, you know, have no problem with those being put out for-
So I wouldn't have any problem myself with taking out the information of the VIN numbers and putting the rest up. Is that good with you?
I don't have a problem with that, nor does my legal counsel.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Porter, you and I have talked, I think every conversation I've had with you in private or at these meetings has touched on recruitment and retention of your staff and doctors and nurses. It kind of gets into the locums arena. I feel very strongly that our community fabric is a lot stronger if we have non-locums staff, physicians, nurses here. You know, their partners, spouses, kids, you know, go to school with, you know, your kids, my kids, our kids. And it's just that kind of thing that we really need to have Banner emphasize and find a solution for. So in the past year, what have you learned and where have you been able to improve in that recruitment and retention arena?
Mr. Commissioner, I really appreciate that question because it's something that my senior leadership team has been really focusing on that. And I'm going to give you a few pieces of information here. I'm going to start with staff and really nursing. You know, last year, obviously, COVID was a disruptor to everything. We had people leaving to travel, we had nurses that were making as much as physicians if they were willing to relocate and work in Florida and live in a hotel room for six to nine months. That is starting to change as rates for locums or for travel staff is going down. We're seeing people coming back and wanting to find a home, wanting to find some stability. Just recently, we were able to hire three travelers who came here, liked our culture, they liked the environment, they like Casper so much that they've now decided to work here full-time. And when you have a traveler, that's good, that's a real good sign that, you know, that they want to continue to be engaged here. It's kudos to our community and our town that people feel at home here. And so to be able to sign three of them within the last month is a big thing. The other thing we look at is turnover rate of our staff. Last year, we had a turnover rate of about 21%. As I look at across the state, that's not bad. Hospitals right now, it's hard to find workforce. I can't, I can't think of any industry that's having real, that's not having an issue with staffing and finding people to work their frontline, working in jobs. But that's not a rate that we're happy with. So what we did is we started spending a lot more time being visible and addressing concerns for patients, not for patients, for our employees. We're doing that by, you know, in the past, we've tried to do town halls where we try to bring people to us, become available. You know, when somebody works a 12-hour shift, the last thing they want to do is spend another hour coming and talking, they want to go home because they're tired. So now we're going to our staff, we're showing up at their staff meetings to listen. We're doing listening sessions where we'll go to a group and just listen and see what are the pebbles in their shoes that we can help take out. You know, the road's always going to be a little bumpy, you know, there's all kinds of things that show up on a day-to-day basis. But you help people continue to walk if you can take those pebbles out of their shoes. And it's the little things, it's the big things. And so those listening sessions gives us ideas and work lists that we can then address and help people to make their work-life balance a lot better. The other thing that I've personally started doing is what I call ride-alongs. You know, I actually went out and spent a day on an ambulance the other day to see what they're doing, to see the amazing work that they're doing. I spent a day passing trays with our culinary staff because I had heard that there was an issue with our call center for filling menu requests. I wanted to see it firsthand so I could better advocate for our patients and the staff that were doing that. And the next thing I'm doing, I'm actually going to be in with Dr. Joseph Montreux with a heart valve, actually, next week, watching that case as we are, you know, rebuilding and continue to build our heart program. I want to see what our perfusionist does. I didn't know what a perfusionist was. And if anybody else doesn't know what that is, I'd be willing to share that with you. But it's a critical piece of that heart team that I want to know what they did and how can we help them.
Mr. Porter, let me-
Yes, sir.
Let me interrupt because I think we have quite a bit to go over with our county attorney today after, after we're done with you and this presentation. I appreciate, and some of the other commissioners might have questions, but I had a couple more. I think that, you know, you are talking about some things that I think directly relate to staff retention, and I think that's helpful, and I commend you for doing that, and I encourage you to keep doing it. I think that, you know, you hear about staff surveys over there and that they're abysmal or that there are all kinds of problems and wheels are falling off the bus. And I just tell you that you're going to need to continue to do everything you can to- to, that's reasonable, to help support your staff and help to be a good employer and not just the big corporate hospital from Phoenix. And sometimes, I wonder whether you personally, but Wyoming Medical Center, has the full support of Banner Corporate, or if it's just a kind of a blip on the map over in wherever Wyoming where they still have stage coaches. So, if there's ever anything that I can do or that this commission can do to help give you the support from your corporate higher-ups, please just let us know. The other thing, I hear that the, you know, the collective provides 9.5 million or 3.33% as you know, annually for what property, plant, equipment, or investments in WMC strategic programs. Is Banner, are you providing an equivalent amount to those same things?
So, we also have an obligation to provide $10 million a year. And so, yes-
To that same, those same categories?
Capital, yes, that's correct. So, when you're talking about categories, it's facilities, programs, things like that require capital dollars. Not operating dollars, but capital dollars.
And those amounts have been invested?
Yes. And in 2022, you have the details in your packets. But yes, we've been fulfilling that obligation as well. And again, you know, a perfect example is that EP lab where we're actually improving care in Wyoming through those partnerships.
But aren't those the funds that are received from the collective?
No, not all of them.
I thought the EP was the $6 million from the collective.
That was, correct. That was through the partnership.
So, Banner has put in an equal amount to the EP?
$10 million. No, not to the EP lab, no, but to other capital projects. Because, you know, Banner's obligation is to invest $10 million to the capital replacement, equipment replacement facilities.
Of its own money, not the collective's?
Correct. That is correct.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes.
Commissioner Mill.
Lance, thanks for coming today. Holy cow. To kind of, I got two questions real quick, if you don't mind. Just a quick snippet. You mentioned something that I don't know if you can talk about or not. The other day, of some partnership that you were doing with a local educational facility around here. Can you go into any of that or not? And the interns and whatnot?
Yes. So, again, as we talk about retaining staff and hiring, so we don't have to have travelers, we're doing some pretty innovative stuff with Casper College. So, right now, we have internship programs for radiology to make sure that they have paying jobs while they're, once they graduate or waiting for their license. We can hire them, pay them, they can get work experience, and make sure we're keeping those people here in Casper. We're also looking at programs with nursing as well. We have programs that look to help nurses go from LPN to RN and building those relationships with Casper College to continue those educations and the University of Wyoming. If those work, we'll be expanding those. The other thing, as you talk about support from Banner Health, the other thing we're looking at right now is recognizing that it's hard sometimes to find people to come to Casper, but there's a lot of people that want to go to Phoenix. Right now, we're working out, working on a program to allow people that if they want to go to Phoenix, try out working in one of our rural hospitals, for example, Casper or Wheatland, Torrington, Warland, and for a two-year commitment. And then, if they still want to, they can work with them getting to Phoenix. But that gets people here, that gets people experiencing our great communities and the wonderful things about Wyoming, and fills our vacancies, so we're not reliant on travelers. And they're here for two years at that minimum contractually.
All right, thank you. The other question I had wasn't quite so soft, Title 25 or involuntary commitment. Where are we or how are we working with that? And I know there's some issue with behavioral. You want to kind of touch on that?
So, in terms of the agreement, the purchase agreement, we still continue to uphold all of that. You know, we pay for, we don't, well, we pay for it. We don't receive any monies for caring for those patients. We still pay WBI for the care of those Title 25 patients. We are upholding our end of that bargain. When you look at the need for behavioral health care within the state of Wyoming, then you have to look at what else are we doing? And that is partnership with the trust on the SIM project, which we've been doing. I recently was awarded an ARPA grant from the SLID Board to create a behavioral health observation unit. Over the weekend, we had 21 behavioral health patients that were waiting for placement somewhere. WBI wasn't accepting the state hospital, so we had 21 patients that required one-on-one observation or through extra care that weren't there for medical reasons. So, this observation unit is going to be key in actually initiating treatment. And then, we can either get them to outpatient services through CWCC or to WBI when beds become available. But that is a growing concern, is the behavioral health crisis. And we often have people in the hospital that have no medical need, but how do we better care for them? And that's what that grant is the first step in doing. And then, as we talk about capital dollars, that's a matching fund. So, we'll then invest another $3.3 million at least in building that behavioral health observation unit.
Thank you, Lance.
I want to ask you about the WBI. You said you're still paying, but I'm reading something from WBI that they sent to me. When Banner Health bought WMC, the contract entered with the Natrona County Commissioners addressed involuntary Natrona County patient care at WBI but not voluntary patient care. Banner Health has been asked but is unwilling to fund indigent voluntary psychiatric patient care at WBI. As a result of WMC's change in ownership between 1.3 million and 2 million was cut annually from the total amount of funding invested in mental health services for our county residents. That's what they've told me.
So, Mr. Commissioner, so our obligation is Title 25. And that's where we uphold that obligation. And when we have a Title 25 patient, we pay WBI for that care. That is our contractual obligation. When I arrived, I also found that we were paying for any indigent patient that walked in their door. You know, they never had any medical issue, they never had any medical problems, they never even stepped foot in the emergency room, and yet, we were paying them for their care. As a for-profit, private organization, I didn't feel that it was our obligation to take money that could be taken back to the hospital in giving raises to our staff and redoing or replacing equipment like CTs and MRIs for them to be able to do charity care. I think everybody has an obligation to contribute to charity care, to caring for the most vulnerable population, and everybody has an obligation to do that. I don't think there should be any organization that says, "We don't do that."
So, their statement was correct to me.
The amounts I would question, but that is true. I renegotiate our contracts to where if it's not Title 25, that they should do their part in caring for the people that do not have funding.
And then, you lost a cardiovascular surgeon that's been here a long time recently. True?
Dr. Munoz, that is true. Dr. Munoz resigned, and he will be going, but we are-
Well, you didn't offer him a contract he could live with, did you?
So, we did offer Dr. Munoz alternatives to our current arrangement. The current arrangement, especially with the direction that was going and the request from Dr. Munoz, were not seen by my legal team as being compliant. And as you know, anytime you get into stark or anti-kickback laws, you have to be very, very careful. And so, it was going in a direction that was not to be compliant, and so, we made alternative offers to how we could structure and support.
You kept Dr. Monfrie.
Yes, that's correct. He decided to stay here. He liked the opportunities that we're providing for him. And so, he is staying, and we will continue to build around Dr. Monfrie. Dr. Munoz did not accept our offer, what we wanted to do, and so, he decided, he's an independent physician, he's not employed by us, decided to go somewhere else. But we will recruit another cardiovascular surgeon, and Dr. Monfrie is fully engaged in helping us to do that.
He'd been here 20 years, I think.
He has been, yes.
Not Monfrie, but-
Dr. Munoz.
Dr. Munoz. Thank you. I'm done.
So is Jim.
Maybe some capital, or maybe some capital investment in some chairs, as we're talking about that.
Lance, did you have anything else that you needed to add or?
No, I appreciate the questions. At any time, Mr. Laird, as you know, and Mr. Nicolassio, I'm always willing to come and answer questions. Like I said, there are rumors, and I'm more than willing, I'm not hiding anything. But this is a time of change. It's not just because of Banner Health. There are a lot of industry changes that are happening, and it's, the challenge then is to lead through this change. And we're going to have some people that accept it, stick around, and other people who decide that being part of an integrated healthcare system is not for them. But we'll continue to provide that level of care. We're committed to it, and you have my support and my willingness to work with you and be totally transparent on what our plans are. And I appreciate the time you gave me today.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone else, Beth, I appreciate it. Eric?
Thank you.
Mr. Bell? Thank you.
Mr. Bell was a very good lawyer in town. I guess you've retired, huh?
Yes.
He worked for insurance companies, too. Good to see you, Jim.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, going right on down the list, Charmaine.
All right, thank you. I think most of what I'd like to cover is more appropriate in executive session, but I wanted to point out that on the consent agenda is the second opioid settlement that had to be approved before five today, so we're asking that it be ratified on the consent agenda. And that's also true, there's participant agreements, which is how they're requiring the, it's a process, the county, or, it's a process that the settlement agreement requires the governmental entities to participate in, to get the money. So, and so, we're asking that those be ratified as well. They have been submitted. I keep double-checking to make sure everything's right, so we're just asking ratification of that.
If I can, were you done with that one?
Almost, but go ahead.
No, no.
I have kind of a summary of information that I'm going to email you, just with a little more substance of what the agreement, the settlement agreement is about.
Okay. I sat in on the Zoom call with the state and the plaintiff's counsel, Jason Oaks, and those attached agreements looked to be, looked to me to be consistent with what was discussed. So, I think we ought to give them a thumbs up.
Right, thank you. And then, the other thing is that we are making progress with the new health building. The real estate purchase agreement is on the consent agenda for tonight also. And the last I heard, the closing was going to be on April 27th, I think. I think you guys have received all this as well. But I just want to point that out, since it was on the consent agenda and wouldn't otherwise be mentioned.
April 27th, and then, there was a, did they get legal, there was a legal description that they were hammering out this morning. Did that get fixed?
We've got it fixed.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I was planning on going over there during our meeting tonight to just sit in, observe, and potentially thank the city and council publicly for essentially partnering with us on this. So, I'll probably slip out for 10, 15 minutes.
Somebody want to?
Wait, I had one other thing. On the consent agenda is the one cent proposal and the resolution. The, on behalf of the library, they had amended their request to add $34,000 for a tractor. I had asked them to provide some other comps. They did, the 34 was the lowest. I would like to add that to their one cent request, so it would be an addition. So, instead of 1.35, it would be the 1.69. No, that's not correct, I'm sorry. It'd be 1.384. So, one, so basically, just that additional. I think there are some compelling reasons to do it. We hammered the library a little bit last fall on their one cent request in a couple areas. And this tractor, this 23-year-old tractor that they do have is worn out, and Tom and maintenance can't always get to the library during the hours that it's open, specifically weekends and evenings. So, I think there's a legitimate need for it. So, that'd be my plug for the library.
For the tractor?
Yeah.
They did, and the Bobcat one was like 44.
Bobcats are expensive.
I think they even-
Well, I mean, just that style, right? It's your type.
Why can't our people go clean it up? Why won't our guy go clean it up?
It's an issue of the hours of the day. Tom does a good job with the parking lot and does a good job with the main lot, but it's to replace essentially their 23-
And they've always done it themselves?
The 23-year-old one, they-
Yeah, that's what I mean. They've always done that themselves?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I'm just looking for information.
Yeah, nights and weekends.
The only thing I have about that is that I don't have any problem with supplying them with additional equipment, but I think that, I think we ought to look at what other concerns we have out there for one cent money right now, too, and see where we're at. And if it's available, I mean, this is the end of the season, and they can get one this summer, but we can look at that and see. And the only part that they lost out last year is they put in money for an additional employee, and you can't use one cent money for that. And so, that's my only concern, is that if we have the money available, we ought to look at other projects, too, and see who else is requesting stuff, too. Because normally, what we're doing tonight is just basically voting on what we've already agreed on, and that doesn't mean we can't add to it if we have additional funding. So, I'm not saying no. I'm just saying I want to look at it closer.
Well, Peter, do we have the money?
Does that break the final tally? That we're trying to stand here?
So, Mr. Chairman, we could probably adjust the opportunity fund to keep the, not the one cent cash reserve, mind you, Chairman Frill, but the opportunity fund to keep the balance as it needs to be per the four-year span. By $34,000. Well, I mean-
Well, I mean, you can go right up to the-
We did, because we used the opportunity fund as a balancer.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Yeah, we went right up to it when we went through it.
Right, through the use of the slash.
But as we were, as Peter and I were talking, we need to look at the year allocation to see if it would be next fiscal, if it would take, you know, if it would keep us within the limit, or if it would be the next fiscal. But we can change, though, you know, we can play with those allocation dates. It would just need, if we were to do this, then I would like it to reflect on this approval on the exhibit for this resolution.
What they do with the [inaudible].
I don't recall what she said back in March. She made this request back in early March. And for, so, you know, she can, she can probably put it in the budget, her budget, I guess, I don't know, but it was a one cent request that I'm forwarding to you guys. But I don't know, there's some value to it, but I don't know how much, Jim. You know, I wouldn't think they would need to.
Right. You want to keep some of the [inaudible]. And keep his guys from [inaudible]. And obviously, take care of your stuff, since it's-
It's 37 years old.
It lasted 23 years. It's been, well, it lasted 20 years, too. Well, it lasts 20 years too.
I'm just waiting to hear if we have the money. Nobody's told me.
We have the money.
And they've been doing it for 24 years. I wouldn't want to interfere with them doing it.
Thumbs up over here. Are we good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
So do we procedurally, do we pull that one cent off the agenda or the consent agenda and make the amendment, Charmaine? Or do we just keep it in the, yeah, how would you want us to handle that?
Pull it off and amend it?
I'm not sure. Is the short answer, I think amending the resolution is what needs to happen. You could amend it verbally.
Yeah, so why don't, you could, somebody could make a motion to, for the, to accept the consent agenda and minus that, minus that one particular item.
Could be amended.
Right, and then that item can be a motion to be brought forward with an amendment to, or the addition of X price for what, for the tractor. And then, so they'd be both separately voted on.
That's right.
Go separate or do you just want one motion to approve with, because I can do it all at once?
You can do a motion with, with two, right?
It might be cleaner if, for the consent agenda, you move to approve the consent agenda without the resolution. And then after that's voted on, then address the resolution.
Do the, do the resolution, make a motion to accept the resolution, then have an amendment to it or just motion with the amendment?
I would make the motion to amend it.
You're removing it off the consent, so then you just...
No, no, I'm not worried about the consent. Whereas if it's removed, then we make a motion for the resolution.
And I'd make a motion to approve the resolution with the amendment of, like, all in one sentence.
That'll work, that'll work. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for humoring me on that. What kind of a tractor is it? It's a John Deere. Of course. It's got yellow wheels.
Who gets the cat? Made out of money.
Who gets the cat?
Somebody want to make a motion, go in the exec, beans we're running out of.
I'll make, I'll second that.
All right.
Dallas.
Been moved by Commissioner Laird, second by Commissioner Norris. All in favor?
Aye.
We're in an executive session.